I'm lodging a complaint. Yeah, yeah. We are calling to order the spring, as I like to say, Wakefield Town Meeting. First order of business is the return of service. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I, Constable Kevin Lopes, hereby certify that I have posted the annual town election warrant April 22nd and the annual town meeting warrant of April 29th. On the ninth day of April 2019, Kevin J. Lopes, Constable, received by Betsy Sheeran, Town Clerk. Welcome. Next, our Town Clerk will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we kick off the festivities, Dan Sherman from the FinCom will tell us what's going on in town financially.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for that clarification. Good evening, everybody. So what I want to do is do a quick run-through of where we stand financially. Tonight, we're going to be spending a lot of money, probably well over $90 million. So it might be a good idea to know where the money is coming from and where it's going before we do all our voting. So this chart is a chart of our receipts. It shows the amount of money that we're receiving from the state via our aid, our tax levy, our property taxes, and also local receipts. And what's important on this slide is the property taxes make up a bulk of the income that the town receives that can pay out in terms of benefits and also doing the work, paying employees and so forth. And it's really what makes our financials very stable. As a percentage, you can see the receipts, again, as property taxes are at the highest. State aid has been relatively low and dropping. And this has helped us for the last few years. When the state has cut aid, it hasn't hurt us as much because we have so much of our revenues coming from other sources than the state. So this has been a real plus. In terms of our local receipts, what's important on this slide is the bottom part of our graph is motor vehicle excise taxes. That is the bulk of the income we get in terms of local receipts. You can see another important point here is in the last three years, from '15, or '16, '17, '18, the local receipts have been relatively flat at roughly $7.5 million. When the Finance Committee gets together and discusses our income that we think we'll have available for 2020, this is a little bit of the wild card. What are we going to receive in local receipts? And for purposes of tonight's budget and an analysis in terms of what we have for money to spend, we assume that the local receipts would be level at roughly $7.5 million for 2020. Hopefully, we'll do a little better than that, but that's what we're assuming. This chart shows state aid over the last 20-plus years. What's important here is that back in 201999, we were receiving more from state aid than we are today and more than what we expect. There's a big drop, obviously, with the dot-com crisis in 2001, and again, 2007, 2008, there's a big drop. And we're slowly creeping back up to where we once were almost 20 years ago. So that's what we have for some of our income. In terms of what we have in the bank, if you will, we have something called the stabilization fund. And this fund is available to be spent. It's something that requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. And you can see that it's been slowly building back up after we spent quite a bit of money 20 years ago on various pieces of property around town. Right now, as a dollar amount, it's up to just about $3 million. It'd be good to be a little bit higher than that, but it does represent roughly 5% of our total revenue, so it's a nice rainy-day fund. Our other monies that we have available is called free cash. This is our checking account. And our checking account used to be extremely small, as you can see. As of July 1st of '18, it was up to $10 million. We spent about $3.5 million last fall at this town meeting, and now we have about $6.5 million, and we'll be spending quite a bit of that. And it represents about, well, today, about 6%, 6.5% of our total budget. We have a target that says we want to have reserves of roughly 9% of our total budget. So between free cash and stabilization, we have that today, and we should have it after and next Thursday's town meetings. The other fund we have is called the Debt Service Fund. It was used to manage our debts for making bonds for payments on, for example, this building comes through our Debt Service Fund, public safety, anything where we're doing bonds, recreation bonds and so forth, that runs through this fund. We put money into it, $1 million is automatically put in, and then we spend out in terms of making bond payments. One of the things we've talked about is trying to get this balance a little bit higher down the road, but right now, it's obviously quite small. In terms of our spending in the past, we've been spending quite a bit on capital. And what I'm showing here is two charts, one that includes our bond payments and one that does not. At one point, not too many years ago, our capital expenditure was all the way down to around $300,000. And that was hurting our building, our infrastructure substantially. We've been able to increase that. We've increased it now to a point where it had been about $2 million the last couple of years. And tonight, we're going to spend a little over $2.1 million. So we're finally getting our capital spend, our infrastructure is getting the attention it really needs. In terms of large budgets, where we spend our money and have been, the health has been the big one. We had a nice dip. That's helped us do a lid quite a bit in terms of starting to fund our post-retirement medical benefits. But you can see, it's starting to creep up again. Retirement and vocational schools also have had modest increases, but the healthcare, to have a 2.2% increase, inflation on that has been really, really helped us out a lot. So through 2019, for the last five years, where we've been spending the money and where is it going? Schools have had a substantial increase. Many of you recall that we had an 11% increase a few years ago. We've had some 5% and 6% increases. So over the last five years, it's increased about 6.4%. Fire has also had substantial increases, as well as the DPW. In total, our spend by departments increased about 6.1%. And it's not all going to, you know, it's spread amongst various items. There's additional people, there's salary increases, and there's also contracts and other maintenance expenditures. So looking at 2020, what are we going to do? So our reserves are at about 9% of our budget, which is right where we want to be. This is a joint agreement between Town Administrator, Town Council, FinCom. We all say that we want to be in, you know, 9% in reserves, plus or minus 1. That's our target. We're going to enhance some services. We have the funds to do it. We have some capital projects that have been identified that'll cost us over $60 million. We're not spending $60 million in capital tonight, but it is a big nut that we're going to have to swallow at some point and chip away at and try to deal with a very large number of capital projects. We've gotten a good income from hotels and meals taxes, which has helped us. A real nice lift is the fact that we had a very light winter. So in terms of snow and ice overdraft, we have a zero, which is a beautiful thing. We also have an issue with the DPW building. We also have the high school on the horizon, as well as the public safety building, as of course is still on the table to be dealt with. So this year, we're going to do a significant draw tonight on the free cash, but at the end of the year, we think we'll be still within that 9% of budget. We also have some big debt out there that we need to pay for, $66 million on various projects, Dolbear, Woodville, public safety and so forth. We have an unfunded liability for retirement of $62 million, and we have a post-retirement medical unfunded liability of about $64 million. So all in, we have debt of about $200 million that we need to deal with. On the revenue side, what we expect is roughly an increase of $3.2 million for the tax levy from $74.5 million. It also includes $1.4 million of new growth. So you see all the construction projects around here. That all adds to our tax levy and allows us to fund things, various projects and so forth, that are critical. We see an increase we expect. We haven't had the finals number yet, but we expect an increase in state aid of about $420,000. Now, I guess about $10.8 million. As I mentioned, local receipts, I'm hanging in there about $7.5, $7.6 million. We're going to use free cash, about $2.6 million. We're going to receive from the Light Department in lieu of taxes about $900,000. We're going to draw about $236,000 from available funds. We have various accounts where we have some money, donations and so forth that come in. We also get grants, we get aid from other quarters, the federal aid, and that's part of the $236. The SBA is going to give us about $928,000 for the various school projects that I mentioned, Dolbear, Woodville, so forth. The Galvin, we get $2.5 million because you, the voters, agreed to build this beautiful facility, and that's added $2.5 million to our tax revenue. So total revenues are expected to be $12,000 short of $100 million. My wife said I should just round it off to $100 million, looks better. So as an actuary, though, I'm in the precision. So for expenses, where we plan on spending the money? General Government. Tonight, we'll go through the $2.4 million for General Government. Public Safety, which is fire, police, buildings, $12.1 million. Human Resources, .9. Schools, $42 million on schools. Libraries, 1.7. Vocational schools, 1.4. Unclassified, which is lots of other stuff, 1.7. And finally, the benefits, retirement, healthcare, so forth, is 17.1 for a total of 86.2 on those line items. And then we're also going to propose to you to spend on Articles. So we have capital coming in at 2.1. Debt service, 5.6. It has to be replenished in order to pay our bonds. Collecting our trash at $2 million. Sidewalks and roads at .9. Blatts Field, we have our Article tonight. We're going to try to do some work on Blatts Field, about $200,000. The downtown, I think it's Article 5. We've been talking a lot about that. You've seen it in the paper and so forth. We're going to propose to spend about $400,000 for that. DPW garage needs some work, feasibility study for $100,000. The overlay account, which is $600,000. And finally, state and county, the state giveth and the state taketh away, $1.7 million for roughly $13.6 million for Articles. And that is it. Mr. Moderator. Where are you going? There he is.
You all done? Okay. Y'all set? Yeah, cool. Thanks. For the record, out of town folks tonight, Dave Lyons, Superintendent, Sherry Dalton, Executive, Kathy Cheek, Executive Director, Bill Revant, Town Administrator, Joe Conway. Joe, you don't live here anymore? Jeez. All right. Rick Smith, Steve Scory, Chris Pierre, Claire Moss, Bob Sheraldi, Don Schneider, Diana Brichette, I think, Michael Fefferling, Don McGrath, Lynn O'Neil, Mark Sardella, Taylor Owen, if I got that right, Il McGinn, who is representing Tommy Mullen here tonight, Trish Homigan, Valerie Angela, I'll never get it, Asimokopoulos, close enough for me, Jeffrey Morrison, Dean, and Mark somebody at the end. There you go. A couple of rules, folks. There's plenty of good seats. You've got to sit down, as the late, great Mario Simiola told me the first time I met him when I decided for this job. Make them sit down, and they can't wander around. Now, see, folks, when I say you have to sit down, you look at me like a blank stare. Your vote doesn't count unless you're sitting down, so you might as well go watch it at home, then. Thank you. All right. Article 1. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to raise and appropriate for tax levy...
Hold on, hold on. I was going to read the warrant first, okay? Really, you're in such a hurry. To determine how much money the town will raise and appropriate for general government, protection of persons and property, human services, public works, public service enterprises, education, unclassified benefits and administration, and the Light Department specifying what appropriations shall be taken from the receipts of the department, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome.
That the town vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from available funds the sums of money as detailed in the following recommendations for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020, the grand total amounting to $100,520,14. The motions will provide for the breakdown of this amount and the sources thereof in the various classifications as described in the recommendation book.
So we take each one, section by section. So first one.
Thank you. Over the past 10 years, I have opened town meeting with the review of how far we have come as a community. While I still think it's important to reflect on what we have learned from our past failings and from our achievements, we also need to be ready for an uncertain future on many levels. The only certainty is that our public desires and deserves the greatest combination of government services we can provide, services we strive to provide within a framework that is affordable. While many of our neighbors have been forced to ask their taxpayers to pay more through Proposition 2.5 overrides, through the hard work of the Town Council, school and finance committees, as well as our extremely dedicated town employees, we as a community have bucked this trend. We haven't made everyone happy, but I believe that we have viewed our needs and abilities very carefully and methodically while balancing forecasted revenues, expenditures and reserves. It is this balance of revenues, expenditures, reserves and affordability of the public that keeps many of our councilors, committee members and town employees up at night. I'm very grateful for all of their hard work and dedication. I certainly agree with Dan Sherman's forward in the recommendation book, that although the budgets and articles presented and recommended this evening are enabled by the governance successes of prior fiscal periods, we need to continuously monitor how internal and external factors affect our ability to perform in future years to come. And in the interim, we continue to attempt to achieve that best balance between the utilization of tax revenue and retention of prudent levels of reserves. Tonight, this budget includes greater commitment to those less fortunate with the advent of recovery coaches in the police and health departments. Partnering with Elliot Community Human Services, it is our hope that these coaches will work with those who are under the influence of addiction to break loose of those change. It is not enough that we say no to death with the use of Narcan. We need to help our citizens say yes to life. We also look to modestly add to the Police Department budget to provide for more consistent parking enforcement in our business and abutting residential areas. We have been grappling with this problem for years, and our engineering partners in our downtown project project that we will make close to 40% of our parking spaces in the heart of the business district more accessible with consistent enforcement. Our Fire Department looks to increase its training and operational efficiency by adding a position of Deputy Chief. It is my, the Fire Chiefs and the Town Council's opinion that this position will greatly assist in the development of more standard operating procedures and a better-trained, safer and well-supervised department. The budget also includes two new positions in DPW. One is the Contract Administrator Supervisor. This position will allow us to better comply with the ever-expansive regulatory requirements, including OSHA training and reporting, but will also assist with obtaining of grants. The second position, the Construction Inspection Position, is mainly dedicated to inspecting contractor work on major projects and subdivisions. In the past, we have utilized an outside consultant to perform these duties at the cost of over $65 an hour. We will pay $31 an hour, and even if you add in the benefits, we are still ahead of the game. As importantly is the fact that the developers are charged for these inspections. For example, the National Grid project is expected to pay $70,000 in fees. This position will also inspect all infrastructure work done by Verizon, private contractors, the Gas and Light Department, and our own DPW divisions. The School Department continues its march towards excellence. A strong educational system keeps our children and tax dollars in Wakefield, attracts new families, promotes new tax growth, and provides a better community for all of us to enjoy. Tonight, we will ask for $2.1 million in capital improvements. We have been able to steadily increase our capital spending each year. However, it is important to note that we receive over $6 million capital spending requests annually, so no one gets all that they want. I want to thank Frank Leoni and the rest of the Capital Planning Committee for their dedication to the careful spending of these dollars. We will also request funding to upgrade Blatts Field, our fire fleet, as well as continue on our path to enhance our wonderful downtown and position us to receive over $15 million in streetscape improvements through the state TIP program. Despite these expenditures, I still anticipate our reserve position to remain within our policy of around 10% of operating budgets at the close, when all the dust settles, probably $6 million in free cash, $3.5 million in stabilization. We also continue to fund OPEB. All in all, we will hold approximately $26 million in reserves and required deposits for future obligations. Probably a big factor in our receiving a AAA bond rating from Standard &amp; Poor's, the highest rating available and enjoyed by only a handful of communities. This bond rating led to the savings of hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars on the Galvin School and other borrowings. Speaking of bonds, Article 3 tonight will fund the annual payments due on our bonds. Actually, it's Article 4. Some really good news here is we will actually be paying off the bonds on the Dolbear, Woodville Senior Center and Public Safety Building within the next two years. Accordingly, this will free up $1.5 million a year of bond payments, which we are now paying within Proposition 2.5 for future projects. I see our best days ahead, but it will take a lot of hard work by all. Again, I wish to thank my department heads, particularly Kevin Gill, our Town Accountant, Arthea, our Treasurer, Victor Santinello, our Director of Assessment, my Administrative Assistant, Sherry Dalton, the Finance Committee, and especially the Town Council for all their hard work, support and dedication. So with that being said, Mr. Moderator, I will move on to the General Government portion of the budget. Motion being that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $2,423,672 for General Government and to provide therefore that the sum of $3,000 be appropriated by transfer from the Wetlands Protection Act filing fees account to the Conservation Commission Personal Services account, and the sum of $2,423,672 be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
The General Government portion of the town budget provides for the majority of the administrative departments of the town. The total amount recommended for General Government is $2,423,672, an increase of $47,051, or less than 2% from last fiscal year. Although happy to answer any questions, the only real substantive change is the reduction in the election expense, as there are only two scheduled elections for next fiscal year. There may be more that come on the horizon, but two that are scheduled that we know about. Within this section, the IT budget is basically level-funded. Over the past few years, we have realigned the mix of staff and contract consultants to better and more efficiently serve the municipal and school departments. I am happy to report that both the town and the school are on the same page as far as IT is concerned. It is certainly clear that in order to provide better services to the taxpayers, this department needs to be staffed to the appropriate level. The department headed by Todd Bowden has done a great job with the streamlined staff, and I would say we are currently being wooed by our neighboring communities for assistance in their IT departments, which is really, really great for the town. The Town Council Department, Accounting Department, Treasurers, Legal Tax Collectors, Assessors, Town Clerks, Election Registration, Conservation, Finance Committee and Planning Board Offices are all essentially level-funded with the exception of contractual and negotiated items. The recommendation for General Government portion of Article 1 is $2,423,672 with $3,000 from available funds and $2,420,672 from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Any questions under FinCom? Any questions or concerns under General Government?
The Finance Committee agrees with the recommendation and supports this portion of the article.
There being no questions or concerns, the motion before you is that the town appropriate $2,423,672 under the General Government provisions. All in favor? All oppose? Mr. Mayo.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of $12,112,297 for protections of persons and property as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
The Protection of Persons and Property section of the budget for fiscal year 2020 has been set at $12,112,297, an increase of $551,029. The Police Department budget is $5,947,868. This reflects an increase of $235,608. The increases in this budget include contractual increases as well as increases in the cost of supplies, like Narcan and tasers, for instance. This budget provides a police force of 47 police officers, school resources, including resource officers at the Wakefield Memorial High School, Galvin and the Vocational School, as well as mission-specific positions which focus on domestic violence, mental health, substance abuse and family-related issues. This budget also includes the funding of a recovery coach at $15,000 in our partnership with Elliot Health Services, as well as two part-time parking attendants at $48,000, which breaks down to $38,000 in salaries and $10,000 in supplies. Our Police Department is recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as an accredited police department. Only 20 or so departments in the state are so distinguished. I believe that not only is this accreditation a testament to the high quality and ideals proffered by the Chief and his entire corps of officers, but has also been helpful in obtaining grants and as well as adopting best practices for the day-to-day operations designed to better serve the public while reducing risk to the public and the risk of lawsuits. We owe a great debt of gratitude to the Police Chief and his department. The Fire Department budget is $5,612,860, an increase of $299,558. The increases are in contractual negotiated areas, as well as $50,000 for the overtime line item. In order to maintain both fire stations, we often have to bring firefighters when staff is sick, injured or on military duty, and we have to bring them in overtime sometimes, so each apparatus is properly and safely manned. Article 8 tonight will address the fact that for this year, a number of firefighters were out, and we had to bring back people to make sure we kept everything open. Hopefully, we will not be back next year with a similar article. I am happy to say that this budget continues includes the Fire Prevention Officer position and does maintain the Greenwood Fire Station, as well as our continued adoption of best practices by ensuring that an officer is manning every piece of equipment. Also, the newly-created position of Deputy Chief will result in better training, standard operating procedures, better supervision, and most importantly, a safer Wakefield for all its citizens. By funding this budget, again, we will keep both fire stations open. I continue to believe that full staff of the Fire Department will lead to reduction in overtime expenses and will provide savings and provide better services to the citizens. The remaining areas of this section remain unchanged. You know, the recent number of fires, while tragic, is a sound reminder of how important this department is to the safety of the town. And we all remember that day in October last year where unfortunately, the Baptist Church burned down, and thank God, no one was injured, and thank God, none of the surrounding properties were affected. So great job by our Fire Department. Within this area is also emergency management. The emergency management is level-funded. The fire alarm, police signals and traffic-like portions of this section is increased by $5,225 to mainly cover the cost of parts and supplies for the many traffic systems in town. The Building Department is increased by $8,272 due to contractual and negotiated increases. It is no secret that this department is very busy with multiple major projects under construction in town. I, for one, am very impressed with how the Building Inspector manages these projects and keeps them clean, neat and safe. This department continues to be a great revenue source, generating close to half a million dollars in fees this year. The remaining budgets in this section are virtually level-funded with the exception of contractual obligations. The entire amount requested for the protections of persons and property is $12,112,297.
Finance Committee voted unanimously to support this portion of the budget.
Any questions? Under the portion of the budget for protections of... Under the portion of the budget for protections of persons and property. Mr. Markham, plenty of good seats down front, folks. Any other, any questions, any concerns? No, you're not coming down for that? Okay. All right. The motion before you is to appropriate twelve million one hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Human Services?
Yeah, Human Services is next. Hey, folks, hey, folks, take a seat over there.
That the town...
Sit down. Thank you.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars for Human Services as stated in the recommendation book. The request for the Human Services portion of Article One is eight hundred and fifty-thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars, thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars more than last fiscal year. In this is the Council on Aging, the request there is two hundred and forty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars, nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars more than the current year's budget, the bulk of which is contractual. The Council on Aging services the approximately five thousand citizens of Wakefield sixty years of age and over. The Council works with older adults and families to provide the latest information related to seniors, as well as providing the needed services for them. Education seminars on subjects ranging from insurance, Medicare, estate and financial planning, to exercise classes, health presentations, bi-weekly blood pressure checks, pediatric clinics, and cholesterol screenings are offered to educate and promote healthy living. They also have a little fun with St. Patrick's Day celebrations and others over there. They also provide transportation services to medical appointments, shopping, and other activities. Provide all these services that they do for what amounts to a very small portion of our overall budget is quite a testament to the staff and our director Judy Luciano. The Board of Health budget is recommended at two hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars, an increase of fifteen thousand sixteen and one dollars. This increase reflects the fact that Redding has opted out of the partnership we formed years ago with Melrose. So since we now have absorbed the loss of Redding, we will only see normal department increases in years to come. I am also most grateful for all the work done by this department, especially in the areas surrounding the health and wellness of the community. This department is working on providing walking and bike routes, as well as analyzing how to better provide for the mental well-being of all our citizens. They host the plain sight program, which a lot of parents go to where you can look into your teenager's room to see exactly what is there in plain sight that they might be hiding. And I hear them meet in evenings up around me, and they're really doing great stuff with our youth. The Recreation Budget is increased by five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars in the Personnel Area. Embedded in that number is the fact that I have requested our rector, Dr. Demograph, to manage the operations of the Civic Center. The programs offered in Wakefield Recreation keep growing and growing, so I encourage you to check out the website and take advantage. The Veterans Budget is increased by one thousand thirty-three dollars to two thousand forty-five thousand five hundred and eight dollars. This budget better represents actual veteran benefit costs at this time. The Veterans Department administers payments to recipients of hospital and medical benefits as well as ordinary subsistence benefits. The town has reimbursed up to seventy-five percent of these costs by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The collaboration with Melrose and now Saguas have provided a department which is doing much more for our veterans. A special thank to our Veterans Advisory Board. This board continues to assist in the outreach effort to provide the best possible services for our veterans. I recently, and I've met many times with our Veterans Agent, and I really am very impressed with the services they do there, and I just see only more happening in that area. And often at the State House, Wakefield is brought up as an example of how a district could work, so kudos to the veteran staff. Total recommendation for Human Services of Article One is eight hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the question under Human Services? There being no questions, the motion before you is to appropriate eight hundred and fifty-thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Sir, plenty of good seats down front, you've got to be sitting down. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, is it? I can't see. I'm blind, ma'am. Mr. Mayo, what do we got next on the hit parade here? Public Works.
DPW. That the town raise and appropriate the sum of six million eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and one dollars for Public Works and to provide therefore that the sum of seventy-one thousand seventy dollars be appropriated by transfer to the Public Works Personal Services account from the following accounts. Perpetual Care Income, thirty-seven thousand sixty-six dollars. Park Trust Funds Available, four dollars. Sale of Lots Funds, thirty-four thousand dollars, and the sum of six million seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Second?
The request for the Public Works budget is six million eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and one dollars, an increase of two hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. Included in that is a fifty thousand dollar increase in snow and ice. The bulk of increases are due to contractual obligations, increases in the overtime hours, training and safety associated with OSHA compliance, software licensing changes, rental equipment for tree removal, rubber material for the artificial fields to maintain the proper shock absorbency to cushion falls, increase in vehicle fuel cost, minor general operating costs, increases in police detail costs associated with projects. The staffing level for the Public Works Department will be seventy-eight, including the Water and Sewer Divisions, in fiscal year 2020. Staffing in the nineties was eighty-four, so this is a department that has really done more with less. Due to demands like our other town budgets, we have added mission-specific positions. The two staff positions added to this budget include a construction inspector, which will be funded through the life cycle maintenance fee development projects, impact fees, and permit fees. The other is a contract manager slash office administrator position that will develop the numerous bids that we are now required to prepare. The contract area has increased beyond being manageable due to the added responsibilities created through new regulations, substantial increase in the number of projects, substantial increase in the number of state, federal, and MWRA reporting requirements, and providing bidding assistance to other departments in the town, to name a few, and it's usually my department that they're helping out. The Snow and Ice budget request is eight hundred and fifty thousand, an increase of fifty thousand over fiscal year 2019. This budget has been historically a little bit lower than maybe it should be and did not increase from a ten-year period in 2000 and 2009, and before that, it did increase from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen ninety-seven. This budget will continue to be a little bit underfunded as a normal year of snow is a little over a million dollars. However, we are really getting close and in the right direction. The budget presented, as I said, has moved in the right direction and allows for needed improvements in a number of areas. It allows a town to comply with NEPTES, which is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is an unfunded federal mandate, and allows the Public Works Department to meet its public safety and first responder responsibilities. The Public Works Department has done an excellent job in preparing their budget and maintaining the town's infrastructure under difficult fiscal constraints. The funding added to this budget is greatly needed and will go a long way to improving a great community. But this is a no-frills budget. It is a budget that provides efficient, effective, and economical services to the community. The DPW's professional approach and dedication has been key to maintaining the core services that they provide. The recommendation for this portion of the budget is that six million eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and one dollars be appropriated with six million seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars from tax levy and seventy-one thousand seventy dollars from available funds.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee unanimously approved this recommended budget.
Any discussion on the DPW budget?
Good evening, Jonathan Chines, thirty-four Hopkins Street. I do support this budget and think it makes a lot of very much needed investments in safety and other things. I do want to highlight one issue, which is that one of the major contracts covered under the DPW is up for renewal, and so the expectation would be that there will be a request for additional funding when that contract is finally negotiated in the fall town meeting. Again, I support this budget. I think it makes a lot of very much, very much important investments, well-needed investments in the department. I think it's important, though, that as a community, we all go in with eyes wide open as to sort of what we'll expect to see in the fall as well. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further comment? Plenty of good seats down front here. Thank you. Okay, bye. Any other discussion before you? Motion before you is that the town appropriate from the tax levy six million seven eight seven one thirty-one, use the available funds of seventy-one thousand seventy dollars for grand total of six million eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand two hundred and one dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next is Public Works Enterprise Department. Mr. Mayo.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen million two hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars for Public Works Enterprise Departments and to provide therefore that the sum of five million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars be appropriated by transfer from water receipts to the various water division budget accounts listed in the recommendation book, and the sum of eight million six hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars be appropriated by transfer from sewer receipts to the various sewer division budget accounts listed in the recommendation book.
Second? Mr. Mayo.
The Water and Sewer Divisions are self-sustaining departments and are not part of the tax levy. These two budgets are well-structured and ensure that we continue to maintain and improve our water and sewer infrastructure, and, most importantly, provide safe drinking water to the community. This budget has increased five hundred, on the water side, the budget has increased five hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. The major increase in the water division budget is related to the MWRA. Other increases relate to contractual obligations and maturing debt. Both purchases and supply accounts, materials and supply accounts have decreased actually by fifteen thousand dollars. So it's important to note that the MWRA water assessment increased for fiscal year 2020 by four hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars. The MWRA amount represents forty-six percent of that budget, and the increase represents seventy-seven percent of our total increase. The MWRA increase is related in an increase in cost and an increase in the amount of water received from the MWRA. Unfortunately, and this happens every year, the final MWRA assessment will not be set until late June and May, so it may increase or decrease depending on the final MWRA budget that is adopted. But our Director of Public Works has a really good job, as does our Deputy Director in kind of figuring that out, and the Public Works Department has done an excellent job in minimizing increases in this budget. On the Sewer Side, the Sewer Side has increased three hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The major increase, again, relates to the MWRA sewer assessment, which has increased three hundred and three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. In fact, without the MWRA increase, a sewer portion of our budget would have increased less than one percent. The changes in the town portion of the budget are related to contractual obligations and minor operating changes. It is important to note that the MWRA sewer assessment represents seventy-seven percent of the total sewer budget. The NWRA increase represents eighty percent of the increase in the budget. And again, the final MWRA sewer assessment will not be set until late June and may increase or decrease depending on the final MWRA budget that is adopted. The bottom line is that both the Water and Sewer Departments are well-structured and ensure that we continue to maintain and improve our water sewer infrastructure, provide safe drinking water, and allow the Public Works Department to meet its public safety and first responder responsibilities. And the DPW, again, has done an excellent job in minimizing increases in this budget. The recommendation for this portion of the budget is that fourteen million two hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars be appropriated from the respective enterprise divisions.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee has also unanimously approved this budget item.
Any discussion on the section of Article One, Public Works Enterprise Department? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to appropriate fourteen million two hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent, you've got a PowerPoint for us, right? About how long, you know?
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes? I'm sitting down. All right. You want to give us your motion before you start?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is Superintendent Lyons for all of you.
Good evening. That the town raise and appropriate the sum of forty-two million forty-six thousand forty-eight dollars for the School Department and to provide therefore that the sum of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars be appropriated by the transfer to the School Department Contractual Services Bus Transportation Allocation from the offset receipts 2020 bus transportation user fees, and that the sum of forty-one million nine hundred and thirty-one thousand forty-eight dollars be raised and appropriated from the tax levy. The total recommended for the School Department is forty-two million forty-six thousand forty-eight dollars.
Is there a second? Mr. Lyons, you're up.
Thank you. Just a little bit about how we develop our school budget and things that are important to know about the parts of our budget. So our budget is guided by our core values, our vision, our mission, and our instructional strategy. Our core values are to inspire a love of learning in our students and to develop a culture of practice that is really grounded in creating a respectful and caring environment in all of our schools and in all of our classrooms. Our vision is that our WPS graduates are confident lifelong learners who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing a rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. So our instructional strategy is broken down into three parts, and we try to keep this simple. There are a number of action steps off this, but I'll only report a little bit on each tonight. So our instructional strategy is broken down into three parts. The first part is to attract, hire, retain, and develop the best teachers that we could possibly hire here in Wakefield. And I think in the last number of years, we've been an exceptional, our leadership has done an exceptional job at attracting some very, very talented teachers, and we've also had, we have experienced teachers here that kind of mentor our new staff as well, so we're very fortunate in that area. The second part of our instructional strategy is to develop and use and create a rigorous curriculum and bring in the best materials that we can for our children that really focus on the most current learning standards and the most current materials that include technologically and digital materials as well. The third part of our strategy is individualized student learning, which really focuses on measuring student growth for students and not just achievement, but really valuing the whole child and looking at their development over time. It also includes the development of inclusive practices using tiered strategies and support to meet students' academic, social, emotional needs as well. And so that strategy is what guides us in developing our budget. This year, we've taken and surveyed the community. We've had feedback from over four hundred and fifty members of the community that include parents, teachers, and stakeholders. The top priorities that have risen to the top for us and that are represented in this budget are student contact time, technology and engineering curriculum opportunities for our students, adjustment counseling support, and social-emotional learning support, increased moderate special needs help with special education, as well as reading supports for our students. And you'll see that in this budget, we've really prioritized and all of the increases really focus on increasing student contact time, and so I'll speak more about that in a moment. So there are three cost centers in our budget. The three cost centers are personnel, operational costs, and special education. Personnel costs make up about eighty, a little over eighty percent of our budget. We have seven bargaining units, and we employ five hundred and sixty-seven employees to teach and support three thousand five hundred and thirteen students and families. The other parts of our budget are made up of operational costs and special education, which includes out-of-district placements and other costs associated with developing programs in district as well. We're particularly proud of special education this year in that we've developed programs to support all learners in district, and we've really made an investment to keep students in district. So based on the completion of programs for some of our students that had been out of district and then coming back into district, we are anticipating a reduction in our out-of-district placements for the FY twenty budget, which we're really pleased about. But we're also, it's important to note, and I'll make... But we're also, it's important to note, and I'll make note of this when I get to another slide in a moment, but we've also had to spend money to save money by developing programs and supporting students in district as well, which I'm pleased to say we've been able to do. So in regard to personnel costs, in terms of the increases from our FY nineteen budget, the personnel increase is one million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is an increase of four point six seven percent. Stipends, point one four. Additional positions, as well as removed positions and retirements, is an increase of point one percent for an overall increase in personnel of four point nine two percent. Our operational costs increased over FY nineteen by point four eight percent. And our special education out-of-district tuitions, we actually saved money this year, but you'll see the hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars was an expenditure that we incurred in FY nineteen to hire staff to support students and keep them in district. So the three parts of the budget, personnel, operational costs, and special education, added together, including the savings in special education, constitute a net positive of four point seven five percent, which is the increase that we're seeking in this budget. So the total FY twenty recommended budget is forty-one million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, forty-eight dollars. Based on the governor's preliminary budget information in Chapter Seventy, which will increase from FY nineteen to FY twenty about three hundred and two to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which constitutes a point eight three to point seven percent increase. When you add that to our four point seven percent budget, that will create an offset and bring our budget down to about three point nine two percent. And so that concludes my presentation. We are grateful with the support that we've gotten here in the community. I would like to especially thank Michael Piffling, the WPS Business Manager. I would like to thank our executive team, school leaders, parents, and teachers who participated in the budget feedback forums. I would like to thank school committee, finance and facilities, including our FinCom liaisons, who are tremendously helpful this year. And I'd also like to especially thank Steve Mayo and Town Council. I would like to extend my sincere appreciation and thanks for the support in providing the students and families of Wakefield the highest quality education possible that we can create here in Wakefield. So thank you very much.
FinCom?
The Finance Committee supports the Education Department's budget this time around, a hundred percent.
Questions under the school budget portion of Article One? Mr. Mitchell?
Hi, Bob Mitchell, Six Paulding. This is just a math question on the slides, that's it.
Yes, sir.
You are adding up the dollar amounts, but the percentages on the right-hand column from my side, you're adding the percentages too? That doesn't make sense if a percentage is based on... Because four percent of two million and point four hundred grand, I would think you would net the numbers and then recalculate the percentage. Doesn't make sense to me, that's four point seven five.
That we added these...
Yeah, maybe that's the way you do it. It doesn't make... Because that's not four point seven five percent of the net, I believe, if you add the percentages.
The dollars and the increases add up to four point seven five percent.
Okay, it just looked like you added the percent columns instead of recalculating.
I think if you calculate the one point nine oh two seven two four, it'll be four point seven five percent.
Okay, that's all, that's it, that's it, thank you.
Thanks.
We better hope the school department gets it right, huh? Just saying. Any other math questions or other comments on the school budget? There being no questions, a motion before you is that we appropriate from tax levy, forty-one million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, forty-eight dollars, combined with the total available of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a grand total of forty-two million, forty-six thousand, forty-five hundred dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Who we got next? Library, Mr. Mayo.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of one million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars for the library department. And to provide therefore that the sum of forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars be appropriated by transfer to the library materials and supplies account from the library trust fund income available and the sum of one million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Request for library is one million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, an increase of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars over last year. This budget allows the continuance of the very popular Sunday hours and other wonderful programs at the library. The library is undergoing a strategic plan update and are most pleased to be included in that. And I think we have a meeting this Wednesday night, another night out this week. Thank you. I'm also happy to say that after years of this, our materials and supplies or book budget actually slightly exceeds the state requirement. Our new library director, Catherine McDonald, is doing an excellent job in her new position. And the recommendation for the library is one million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars as stated in the recommendation book.
FinCom?
The Finance Committee also agrees that Catherine McDonald's done a great job. Large, very large shoes to fill. Good to see you here again, Sharon. And the Finance Committee does recommend favorable action.
Any discussion on the library portion of Article One? There being no discussion, a motion before you is to raise from tax levy, one million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Transfer from available funds, forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars for a grand total of one million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The Voke?
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
This budget represents an increase of two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars more than last year and is based upon the expected enrollment of seventy-five students at the Northeastern Vocational School, which is seven more than ever in this year, as well as three students at Minuteman Regional in Lexington and three at Essex North Shore Regional in Deandrus. And we need to be cautioned because we don't know the exact numbers until school starts. I'd say over the years, you know, we work a lot with the vocational school and much work has been done on this budget. And we certainly have a great relation with our partners at the top of the hill. I speak with Superintendent DeBarry on a very frequent basis. He is very gracious in allowing us to have police training exercises up there. They do participate and actually fund the School Resource Officer at that school. And we continue to work together on a number of issues. And in fact, the Voke has asked that I serve on their building committee as they are undergoing building a new school. The Voke has adopted many cost-saving measures, including entering the GIC. This amount that we're appropriating tonight, however, is continued upon the state funding, Chapter Seventy, and the regional transportation account at the currently stated levels. The requested and recommended amount is one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
FinCom?
Finance Committee recommends passage of this article as stated.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Bob McLaughlin, Three Seventy-Six Water Street. Yeah, I'm a big supporter of the vocational school. I just have one question. Does anybody know what the status of the new replacement school is in the lineup? Does anybody know?
Can you answer that, Mr. Mayo?
Yes, I can answer that. They have been accepted into the SBA program. They will be going forward and hiring an owner's project manager and an architect and going out to bid for those services very shortly.
And what percentage of the new school project is Wakefield... What are we obligated for?
Well, the state is reimbursing seventy-two percent at this point, which is really good. What is nice about the vocational school on our standpoint is that it's done on a per capita basis. So it's going to be based on the number of Wakefield students that are there each year on the bond payment. We've been to a couple of sessions on that. In fact, the Chairman of the Finance Committee and I went there a few weeks ago, a few months ago now. And I think it's something that we would certainly handle within two and a half. We'd have to come back here and do it. But the Voke has a very strange formula. It can go to, you know, do elections everywhere and it's kind of an interesting thing. But I would bet we're going to be looking less than, you know, two hundred, three hundred thousand a year, depending what happens.
But we're probably a few years out.
Oh, a few years out anyway. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or concerns under the Voke? There being no more further questions. The motion is to appropriate from tax levy with no available funds used, one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayo, unclassified?
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, ninety-one dollars for unclassified portion of the budget as stated in the recommendation book and provide that one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, ninety-one dollars be raised and appropriated from the tax levy.
Second? Mr. Mayo?
The recommended total for the unclassified portion of the budget is one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, ninety-one dollars, an increase of fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars over the current year's budget. The two main reasons for this increase in the budget is the increase in the general insurance portion of the budget of seven thousand dollars and the increase in the Medicare portion of forty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars, which is due to the fact of a higher payroll. And we pay, the town pays one point four five percent of pay for anyone hired after April first, nineteen eighty-six. The remaining portions of this budget are basically level funded, with the exception of one thousand dollars, which was added to the miscellaneous Town Council budget to help fund some of the wonderful community programs sponsored by the Human Rights Commission. The recommended portion for the unclassified portion of the Article One is one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, ninety-one dollars.
Mr. Sherman?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Bob McLaughlin, Three Seventy-Six Water Street. One of my pet peeves in this budget, and it has been for years, is the Historical Commission. The low amount of funding for the Historical Commission at two thousand dollars with a town that's got a budget of over a million dollars now seems a little weak. When we're looking to bring and attract visitors to our town through our downtown program, I would suggest the Town Council take a peek at this and, you know, and perhaps working with the Historical Commission, increase that budget and maybe perhaps for appeti... We're not even in the AAA book. I mean, we should, I think we should increase our appetizing for the historical components of what we have in Wakefield, who've been around since the sixteen hundreds. We just threw away a hundred and fiftieth anniversary last year for the town of Wakefield that we didn't celebrate, but we probably could have. So I'd like to see that budget at some point, you know, I'm not going to make an amendment or anything, but I'd like to see, maybe the Town Council take a peek at that and expand that going into the future. Thank you.
You know, Bob, maybe it's because there's all these books available about Wakefield that somebody wrote.
That's Pleasure Island, that's available on Amazon. Thank you, thank you.
Any further questions, concerns, under the unclassified section? Motion before you is to appropriate one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, ninety-one dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Benefits and Administration. Mr. Mayo?
That the sum of seventeen million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars be raised and appropriated from tax levy for benefits and administration as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Can you run that number by me again? Steve?
Seventeen million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty.
Okay. Yeah, no, I don't have that. I have a hundred. Yeah, I got it, I got it, okay. All right, grand total. Okay, second?
Second.
Mr. Mayo? Wait a minute.
The amount requested for benefits and administration reflects an increase of forty, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars over last year's budget or a very minor two point nine percent. The program of benefits provided by the employee's retirement system and the group insurance budget is set by statute with the employee's contribution to the group insurance costs determined by negotiations. The appropriation for the retirement system for fiscal year 2020 is four million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, reflecting an increase of three hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars over last year. The appropriation is based on an amortization schedule the town initiated in fiscal year, I think, nineteen ninety-eight, and updates every two years and is scheduled to end in fiscal year 2036. The workers' compensation budget request for fiscal year 2020 is increased due to some employee injuries over the last few years. We are happy to say that if we continue a better trend, and we are continuing a good trend this year, we will not see those types of increases again, and hopefully I didn't just jinx that. In January of 2012, and you saw this on Dan's slide up here, the town of Wakefield was one of four communities who were able to join the State's Group Insurance Commission. This was only able to occur due to the prompt action of the Town Council in adopting the change in state law and subsequent agreement with the Public Employee Committee and the underlying unions. Due to this change in insurance, the town has saved millions of dollars. In fact, our 2012 cost of insurance was over fourteen million dollars without any funding of OPEB. This figure includes funding OPEB at the full amount of one point six million. So we are really in a much better shape. And although the GIC increased rates by three point three percent for this fiscal, coming fiscal year, the group insurance budget increased by a mere point six percent. The movement to the GIC still continues to pay dividends, and our Human Resources Department of Amy Forziati and Karen Dusset continue to work with our employees to enroll them in the most cost-effective plan for both them and for the town. In fact, to date, the town has avoided fifty-two thousand dollars in premium fees by helping employees choose less costly plans. Another program that we have is actually being looked at by a lot of other communities is our opt-out program, where you can opt out of our insurance, go on your spouse's, because we have to make sure you have insurance. And we've going to save an estimated five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in fiscal year 2019 alone. That trend has really trended well over the last few years.
Any discussion on the motion under Benefits and Administration? FinCom, sorry.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action, but I believe that you said that the OPEB budget was one point six million? It's actually one point six seven five million. So we boosted it at seventy-five thousand dollars. But anyway, Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this portion of the article.
There's no heading. The motion before you under Benefits and Administration is seventeen million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. All in favor? Yeah. Oh, I did ask for discussion. Yeah. Anybody else? No. Yeah, I did say any discussion, and then you got up. Thank you, though, Jonathan. Really, the rookie is jumping right in tonight, I like it. All right, let me try this again. The motion before you is seventeen million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Light Department?
That the town appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars from the light operation account to the non-contributory veterans pension account and to appropriate the sum of nine hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars from the light operation account to the contributory retirement pension accumulation fund account and to appropriate the sum of one million, ninety-five thousand, fifty-two dollars from the light operation account to the employees' group insurance account and to appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars from the light operation account to the workers' compensation account and that the balance of the receipts of the Municipal Gas and Light Department from July first, 2019, to June thirtieth, 2020 be appropriated for the use of the department for other expenditures, provided, however, that if the income from said department shall exceed the expense of the department for said period of time, the use of the excess in whole or in part shall be determined by the Board of Light Commissioners.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo?
The final portion of this article allows for the orderly transfer of funds from the different accounts within the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department to the town's pension, group insurance, workers' comp, and retirement accounts as the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department employees partake in these programs and are funded not from the tax levy, but from the receipts of the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department.
Discussion, FinCom first? Nope, oh, no, right, you guys aren't on this. Any other discussion, any questions or comments on the Light Department budget? discussion, any questions or comments on the light department budget? Motion before you is to appropriate the money as set forth in the four-tiered how-you-do-it by Mr. Mayo under the general light department. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Article II, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the capital outlay, or as follows, or to see what the town will do about it.
That the town vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy the amount of $2,140,48 and transfer the amount of $344,000 from the sewer receipts account to the sewer department capital outlay account, and the sum of $75,500 from the water receipts account to the water department capital outlay account to carry out the purposes of Article II as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second? Are you doing this?
Thank you. Now, Mr. Moderator, Frank Leon, the chairperson of capital planning, will present the article.
Frank Leon, and you have a PowerPoint? Okay, great. Thanks.
This year's capital outlay, we met multiple times over the last couple of months with department heads and representatives to determine what's needed in each department and tried to do our best to make those decisions along with myself, David, Tracy, Dan, Philip, Steve, and mostly other members. We did our best to come to our conclusion on these items. It's itemized in the pamphlets that you have, but I'm going to just go over some categories and just try to go through it real quickly so we don't have to get into the depths. Broke it down to prior year leases, fleet, facilities, roadways, fields, parks, and cemetery, miscellaneous items, IT, and then water and sewer enterprise. Prior year leases, we use this to carry the high-budget items year-to-year that we need, but because of the IT and the school budget carrying most of this item going forward, we were able to establish it, the leases dropped from 693,544 to 333 to 73, and the reduction of the 351,000 allowed us to do some other projects that I'll highlight coming up. The fleet, the 539,500, 60,000 of that is for a lease purchase of a DPW truck. That's going to be a multipurpose truck that they can buy additional attachments for, so we don't have to have more than one of those trucks and have more insurance costs. Three police cruisers, which is consistent with what we've been doing over the last couple of years, and a council on, a new council on aging bus. The facilities improvements, 641,000, includes a Doyle sprinkler system and a Doyle fire panel. Now that we have the young kids there, it brings the school up to the standards as all the other schools with the sprinkler system and the fire panel ties it indirectly with the station. HVAC units at the high school, a couple every year, second boiler at the Dahl Bear, and then a town hall generator that we're actually getting the generator at no cost, and it's just a hookup costs that we're, had in the budget. Roadways, 110,000, going towards cemetery roadways, townwide parking lots, and drainage at the end of Quarter Street, a drainage swale to catch some of the water before it goes into the lake. Field parks and cemetery, 367,950. These items, some of these big items, which we were able to use from the extra money, include the veterans, field tennis court and pickleball courts. You've seen the courts down there. It's been kind of desolate for the last couple of years, but we decided to give it life again. And a new Greenwood School playground. We're going to try and get a new playground every year or a year or two to want it to these schools. A couple miscellaneous items, that's 165,225, $165,225, ocean safety equipment, new high school walk-in freezer, Dahl Bear PA system. It's not the whole PA system, it's just making sure all the rooms are connected to the system. Civic center signage and balcony up at the top that's kind of falling apart, and an air compressor for the fire breathing apparatus. It's only 10% of the cost. The remainder is funded by a grant. IT, obviously this number is way down from previous years, 83,100, and mainly goes for equipment refreshing and software. The sewer enterprise is 344,000. They were, we were replacing an old dump truck and a muffin monster. A muffin monster is something that grinds up, pulverizes solid objects before they go through the filtering system, so it doesn't damage it and cause even more problems and cause any sewer backup. Water enterprise, 75,500 hydrant replacements and a new pump at Linden Street. And thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Sherman, is the muffin monster, it's like, is it a, does it look like something on Sesame Street?
Yeah, the Finance Committee--
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee enjoyed the discussion about the muffin monster. We were looking for some muffins. Anyway, the Finance Committee went over this budget and recommends favorable action. I gave us a vote on our part.
Christine DeFalise, 33 Lawrence Street. I have a couple of questions on the cost of some of these trucks up near the top. I don't know whether there are misprints on the articles or what, but it says for one of them, 2002 pickup with a plow, but still $53,000 for a truck that old?
That's actually what we're replacing. The items listed here are other replacement items. They're not listing the new vehicles that we're purchasing.
Okay, so why is that all these amounts here then? Or is that what you're getting on a trade?
No, that's the cost of the new vehicle. I don't think we're, we're not trading anything in, right? Do we trade any of these? No, sometimes.
So the year that's listed is something you're getting rid of?
It's being replaced, yes.
Okay.
Some of these items are pretty old.
Well, that's kind of confusing, though.
Okay.
Okay, and then another thing, down the bottom, the cemetery?
Mm-hmm.
That was in last year's budget.
We give money every year to keep the roadways and--
But they haven't done anything, so I guess my question is what happened to the other $40,000?
Let them finish, okay? Go ahead. You can explain that now.
Do you want to get into depth with the year-to-year? It, he'll go, you want to talk about what they--
Joe, can you answer that? Mr. Conway might be able to answer that question.
Joe Conway, Wakefield Public Works. The money that we got last year for the cemetery roadway work, you're going to see done this spring.
Okay, so then what are you going to do with the other $40,000? There's not that many roads down there.
Additional work.
Like what?
More work in the cemetery. So $40,000 will carry us to a certain point. This additional funding will bring us hopefully even further along in resurfacing the cemetery.
Okay, that just seems kind of excessive. Okay, one thing on the, what does it mean, the bottom of the second page list, DPW, 2010 Chevy Impala, then it says 50%? How can you buy a half a cup?
That was my question too, but if you look above to the sewer side--
Yeah.
It's that 2,000, that Chevy Impala, there's 50% there too. So that house, that car will be used, half a water, half a sewer, so we're charging it to the appropriate designations.
Okay, I didn't notice the other entry. Thank you.
Mr. Scott.
Peter Scott, 25 Avon Street. I'm maybe missing it here in the booklet, but at what point do we talk about funding, repair, and replacement of roads in town?
Steve, can you answer that?
That's a separate article, 15, Article 15.
Thank you. I look forward to that one.
Any further questions under Article II? There being no further questions or comments. The motion is that the town vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy the amount of $2,140,48 and to transfer the sum of $344,000 from sewer receipts account to the sewer department capital outlay account, and the sum of $75,000 from water receipts account to the water department capital outlay account to carry out the purposes of the article as stated in the recommendation book. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Article III, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the Capital Projects Debt Service Fund, also known as the Debt Service Fund, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy to the Capital Projects Fund, also known as the Debt Service Fund, the sum of $4,625,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Mr. Mayo.
The purpose of this article is to supplement the $1 million that each year is automatically appropriated without town meeting approval for debt service. This $1 million appropriation is authorized by Massachusetts Legislative Act. The $4,625,000 request under this article, along with the automatic $1 million appropriation, is used to fund our debt payment for fiscal year 2020. Included in this figure is the $2,484,858 for the debt exclusion for the New Galvin School. The remaining $2,140,150 is the amount necessary to continue the payments on our other bonds, including the Walton School approved last year. This is a very important program and allowed us to finance a number of projects, including two schools, now three schools, the library, public safety building, senior center, improvements to town hall, the New Galvin and athletic facility improvements at the high school. Now we are nearing the end for many of these projects. This year is the last payment on the Dahl Bear, $51,000. The senior center in Woodville will be completely paid off in fiscal year 2021. Next year will be the last payment there, and the public safety building in 2022. Once these payments are complete, we will have 1.5 million per year freed up for other uses or projects. We look forward to the community conversations that we will certainly follow. The council recommends favorable action.
Discussion first. FinCom.
Doctor, moment, you forgot about me.
No.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns? There being no further discussion. The motion is that the town raise and appropriate from the tax levy to the Capital Projects Fund, also known as the Debt Service Fund, the sum of $4,625,000 to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Article IV, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to use such sum of the balance of the operating fund of the municipal gas and light department as of June 30th, 2019, as the Board of Light Commissioners may vote in computing the tax rate for the fiscal period July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to use such sum of the balance of the operating fund of municipal gas and light department as of June 30th, 2019, as the Board of Light Commissioners may vote in computing the tax rate for the fiscal period July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
It is recommended that the amount of $904,512 be transferred to the town treasury from the operating fund of the municipal light department for the fiscal year 2020 budget, and that the assessors be authorized to use this amount in establishing the tax rate for fiscal year 2020. This is an increase of $13,367,000 over last year's payment or 1.5%. Peter Dion and the Board of Light Commissioners have been very helpful this past year in finding innovative ways to conserve and collaborate with the town in a number of areas and thereby save the town money. This action, taken together with the action in conjunction, Article I, Light Department Section of the budget, will permit the municipal light commissioners provide for the orderly operation of their department.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on the article.
Any questions or concerns, discussion under Article IV? There being no further discussion. The motion is that the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to use such sum of the balance of the operating fund of the municipal gas and light department as of June 30th, 2019, as the Board of Light Commissioners may vote in computing the tax rate for the fiscal period July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
I'm happy Ryan's coming back down.
Okay. Article V, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from the tax levy or transfer from available funds a sum of money to implement Phase II design improvements and upgrades to the town right-of-way corridor, including Main Street from Church Street to Franklin Street, Olive Common Street, Albion Street from Main Street to Gould Street, Water Street from Main Street to Shaw's driveway, Lake Avenue and Spalding Street, and certain related areas, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town appropriate from tax levy the sum of $390,000 to carry out the purposes of this article.
Second, Mr. Mayo.
The purpose of this article is to make improvements to the downtown right-of-way corridor, which includes Main Street from Church Street to Franklin Street, Common Street from Church Street to Main Street, Albion Street from Main Street to Gould Street, Lake and Spalding Street, Water Street from Main Street to the driveway at Shaw's, and related other areas. This is the second phase of a multi-phase program that could result in over $15 million of state and federal dollar investment in the downtown corridor. The goal of the project is to improve pedestrian access, walkability, bicycle access and circulation, parking, traffic flow, traffic control and signals, streetscape, safety, crosswalk passage, and improvements necessary to comply with regulations that impact this project. We had a lot of very public positive impact, and the scope actually expanded to include the lake and Gould Ave area, areas. We've already had a discussion of possible grants through MassWorks to complete the rest of the design after tonight and produce construction-ready plans. It is planned that the construction portion of this project will be funded through the state's transportation improvement program, or TIP program. You're going to hear that TIP a lot tonight. This phase of the project will develop plans of the entire area so it can meet the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and receive funding for the construction of the project. Over the last four months, many meetings of stakeholders and community forums have been conducted. The plans presented tonight are a compilation of those very meetings, and questions and comments entered on our interactive website presentation. Now, Mr. Marta, I would request that the town meeting body allow our consultants, Trista Meegan and Jeff Morrison Logan from VHB, make a presentation on the project.
Okay, first, you want to, are you recommending this, FinCom? Okay, why don't we get you out of the way? Yeah, let's get you out of the way. And, okay--
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this motion.
Okay. And our presenters are where? Come on down, folks. We need a vote. Yeah, we need a vote to--
So I did, if someone would second the motion that--
Well, no, no, let's--
--our consultants--
Yeah, we'll, I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Mayo, to have, you folks aren't, don't, you don't live in Wakefield, correct? Okay, somebody make a motion to allow them to speak here at town meeting? Thank you. Second, any discussion? There being no discussion. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. You're up, folks.
Thank you very much. My name is Trish Domagin, Dom McGinn, from VHB. I'm here with Jeffrey Morrison Logan to talk about the downtown, the Wakefield Envision Project. We have 53 slides, so we're going to go rather quickly. I'm going to present some, Jeffrey's going to present some, and if there's any questions--
Questions will be at the end.
Will be at the end.
All right, thanks.
The project limits, the original project limits that were presented at last fall's town meeting included a portion of Main Street, this brown area is Main Street, and Common Street here, Church Street, Main Street that goes up to Salem Street and Albion Street. It also included the Water Street parking lot and a few signal upgrades along Washington, uh, excuse me, Water Street from Main Street up to the Shaw's parking lot. Since then, the project has been extended to include Spalding Street and Lake Ave, Main Street down to Salem, which was in the original, Albion Street, not from North Ave, but also to Gould Street, Main Street all the way to the junction, Nahant and north, and also Bedham and Streetscape, complete streets on Water Street. What the vision was originally was to make it more of a walkable pedestrian scale downtown area, make sure that people that are going from the lake and going around, oops, sorry, going around the lake would have, say-- have a safe way of getting into the downtown area, doing some streetscape improvements along downtown and also address some of the safety issues. These are just photos of some of the conditions that are out here. There are really long crosswalks along Main Street. Some of the wheelchair ramps, actually most of the wheelchair ramps have to be upgraded. The parking condition out there, a lot of people are parking in crosswalks and areas that aren't legal to park in. And also, there's just a number of parking, it's a high saturation in parking areas. So, since the town meeting last fall, there's, this is a number of things that have already been done. There's been a lot of surveys done, a lot of data collection. We've evaluated the safety condition in the area, the downtown area. We've done a traffic analysis. We've taken a look at the side street, how people are parking on the side streets, how people are actually driving on the side streets. We've done a number of sidewalks and corridor designs. We've come up with three different alternatives for each of the roadways that are within the project limits. We took a look at the rockery. I'll leave it at that. The construction cost estimates, we've taken a look at construction cost estimates just based on, you know, the different configurations that we've come up with. We did take a look at what the funding eligibility requirements would be if the town wanted to use state and federal funding for construction of the project and design of the project. And as Mr. DeMayo, Mr. Mayo, sorry, had mentioned, there was a number of public meetings, so much so that there was pretty much a meeting a week, I would say, for the last four months. So, as I had mentioned, there were weekly project team meetings, but also focus group meetings. So there was a number of representatives from different community groups that met with us on a monthly basis to talk about what the vision of the project would be, how they actually, what the goals were for the project and how it would be influenced by their input. We put together a survey on the town website and the town did post all of the materials that we actually presented at all of the meetings that we had. There were public meetings, there were three public meetings to talk about some of the concepts and the sketches that we had provided. And also, we had social media, there was a lot of social media on it, and then the project survey, which was actually something that you could go on to the town website and input your comments. And we did take a look at all the comments that were on the website. Okay. So, these are the public meetings that happened to date. So, it started off right after town meeting and we had our last town, well, the last presentation was at the beginning of April. So you can see that there were a number of meetings in here, focus group meetings, public meetings, and we got a lot of input. There was a lot of enthusiasm. It was awesome. There were a lot of people that just had a lot of things that they wanted to say, wanted to see, and that the improvements that we were taking a look at. It was really great feedback. The focus group meetings were really just, it was, it was a great idea that the town had thought of that just really introduced and just allowed for a lot of people to give us input, so much so that these are all of the different commissions and organizations that were represented at the focus group meetings. So it was a terrific output. Keep going? And these are the public meetings, and the whole intent of the public meetings was just to gather some information at the first one. The second one, come up with some different sketches and ideas, and then kind of to vet it down into a preferred concept. So, tonight we're going to present the preferred concept. Go ahead.
So, we're just about to get to some of the fun, fun stuff up here as well. So, it was great hearing all these comments from, from the community. We really took them to heart. In terms of what you want to do with the entire downtown, it's much more beyond the cars and beyond the parking, beyond the circulation itself. It's really about the pedestrian movements, about all the place-making opportunities, and really bringing the whole heart of your downtown to life through many existing conditions, as well as some future things that we bring into the process. Again, we heard a lot about things from making it vibrant, making sure that it's fundable, constructable, and understanding about how we're going to move people through the heart of downtown in a much more efficient and much more celebratory type of way. We thought we'd throw in a couple of quick examples from other communities that we've known throughout New England in terms of what these types of transformations can really mean for a community like Wakefield. You have a wonderful downtown. There's a lot of great things that are happening here that we've observed. Towns like St. Albans up in Vermont have very similar issues to yours in terms of angled parking downtown, a lot of businesses, similar scale, similar density, similar character. When you go through these types of exercises, not only is it about solving for many different modes of transportation, cars, bikes, vehicles, transit, and so forth, the amount of impact that this has in terms of beautification, sidewalks, places for people walking through your downtown, we very much see very similar opportunities like you have here in St. Albans from streetscape, pedestrian accommodation, places for people to sit in here on new benches, for example, lighting and some of the streetscape furniture, as well as a lot of room for enhanced landscape treatments in the heart of downtown. So here's another view in the same area. This probably looks very similar to some parts of downtown here, where you have some crosswalks, pretty ill-defined accommodations for the pedestrians. When you think about some accommodations and some enhancements to these streetscapes, what it can really do in terms of people places. So, we really think through a lot of the alternatives and the conversations that we had with you, that we can make similar types of improvements here in downtown in terms of expanding this, really for people and for activities. We talked earlier this evening about arts and culture and those things. Plenty of room to celebrate even more than what you're doing in your downtown as well. Here's one of the last ones here in terms of some of the similarities. If you just carefully look at the images on the, on the left here, in terms of some of the challenges and some of the darkness and so forth, what that could get transferred to in terms of some brand-new streetscape, plenty of room for parking and for cars, as well as people walking down these parts of Main Street. So we thought we'd share that because we see very similar opportunities throughout the heart of downtown here as well, in terms of what it will do for many people in the community. So in terms of some of the design concepts, I know there's, there's a lot of detail that we could spend the whole evening talking about tonight, but in terms of where we focused, after many conversations, great conversations, I'd add, we settled in on a concept for South Main from the North Avenue area all the way up to Water Street here on the left-hand side. We're in the Galvin School here as well today. We heard a lot about bike accommodation through a shared path on this side of Main Street here. We had a lot of great conversations about adding medians in the middle of the street here as well, and really about cleaning up the opportunity for pedestrians and bicyclists to move, as well as to connect over to the planned regional trail that'll come out right across from the Galvin Middle School. We talked a lot about what we call the middle main part of Main Street, which is really from Water Street on the right-hand side here, all the way over to Crescent Street on the left, and here's the rockery. Many different options in this location. The one thing I'd like to point out in here is that we're able to accommodate bicyclists through the green area here that would be up along the sidewalk, sharing the sidewalk on both sides of Main Street, accommodate what we're calling a hybrid in terms of parallel parking on the southern parts of downtown, as well as a significant amount of maintaining the angled parking here as well. And we're able to, in this location, be able to increase the amount of parking spaces to 15 extra parking spaces by simply looking at the movements along Princess Street, as well as Center Street here, by having a circulation movement and making these one-way streets here that would work as a couplet to be able to increase the amount of parking spaces just within this section by 15 parking spaces total. Moving further to the north, we're now down towards the Common is over here as well. The lake is off to the left-hand side here. Here is the rockery. I think one of the interesting conversations we had here was really about taking the rockery where it is, maintaining its current location that's shown here in the middle, expanding it to the south and to the top here, and really making that much, much better connected, both to the upper Common here, as well as across the street here, by really repurposing Common Street, by making it a one-way going from Church Street, one-way heading south. That does a couple of things. It narrows down the road, improves the crosswalks, lets people get better connected through the heart of downtown here, also accommodates an increased parking area along Common Street to the tune of about 11 extra spaces along Common Street just within this portion as well. As we move further north, we've rotated here 90 degrees. The lake is up on the top part of the screen here. We have Lake Avenue here, Spalding Street with a turnaround. We think with a simple improvement along the Common edge over here, by going into the park by a few feet, it'll let what's angled parking out here become perpendicular parking. What that does is two things. It enables more parking to happen along the Common. It also enables vehicles to be able to come down Lake Avenue, turn in 90 degrees, back out, and then go back out to Church Street, versus having to go all the way down to Spalding Street and turn around today. So we're looking at the operational, the safety, the capacity issues, all within this area as well. And we're able to introduce an extra 16 parking spaces in here as well. So a common theme of improving as we go, and this is all based on the comments that we heard as well. Switching gears, going over towards Albion Street. So we have Main Street over here. This is the middle part of Main Street. Albion Street goes all the way over to the trail, the train tracks here, ends over by Murray here as well. We thought this was a pretty modest series of improvements, really focusing on what we call bumpouts at intersections. Because this street is pretty narrow in its width, we're able to do some bumpouts, get a little place-making, add to the character, add some street trees, and add some furniture as we go. As we head all the way out towards that left end where Murray was here, we're across the other side of the tracks, we're also looking at simplifying some of the street alignments here to get rid of extra asphalt that would be in the middle of the road here, looking for places to create what we call little pocket parks, amenities, and landscape features that'll really bring this whole area to life in terms of its streetscape and its amenities. We're now over onto Water Street briefly here. Here's where we have Main on this side, Water Street that goes all the way out to the supermarket here as well. This, again, was one of the more simpler approaches here, where we thought by expanding the width of the north side of Water Street here, we could accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists here as well, and the rest of it's pretty minor cleanup, I would venture to say here, as well as some cleanup around where the Shaw's Market is on this side as well. And lastly, we think about the next phase of this project. A lot of those diagrams that we shared with the community and with you tonight were really generic somewhat in terms of the look and feel of some of those diagrams. We spent a lot of time thinking about the turning movements and the radiuses and all of the different pieces, but in terms of the character that would come into some of these streetscape areas, think about the next phase, which is really about landscaping and streetscape improvements, places for people to dine. We're going to be designing that with the community in terms of filling in these areas, so that when we look at drawings like this that we prepared over the last few months, we're going to be thinking about the materials, the quality, the character of these spaces, and really bringing it to life and making it very much Wakefield-specific. It'll apply to lights and ballards. It'll also apply to understanding where bicyclists can park and what the street furniture will look like for them as well. It'll also apply to defining what the medians could look like, some of the, picking out of some of the furniture, as I mentioned as well. So a lot of things that we can actually bring to the table, and also landscaping, street trees, plantings at the bumpouts. What do these things look and feel like? We're excited about that next phase of work. A little bit about parking, Trish?
So, just to point out that the town is taking a separate initiative on changing all of the parking regulations to two hours townwide, correct? And that's going to be enforced starting July 1st. So, we did a parking study in February on a Thursday, and we actually took a look at the number of parking spaces that are within the district. And what the district means is the area on Main Street and also the side streets from North Ave to Main Street, and then from Crescent Street to Main Street, from Water Street to the lake. And we noticed that there were 554 parking spaces available in that land area. But when we took a look at it in terms of operations and how people were parking and where the most parking spaces were filled, it was from the rockery to Water Street. So that's what we're focusing on right now. So, just a few statistics for you. The most occupied spaces were obviously at noon time, people going to restaurants and such, and also at 4 to 6. So there was over 85 percent of the parking within that area, from the rockery to Water Street, that was filled in that area. And what we did notice, which was interesting, was that 27 of those 90 parking spaces within that area were occupied for over four hours. So that's about 35 percent of the parking spaces that are available at that time in the highest demand or have been, were filled for over four hours when we were taking a look at the parking study. So this is the area that we're talking about. The yellow represents Main Street. This is Princess Street and Center Street. So what we took a look at with the alternative that Jeffrey just went through was that there will be 21 spaces on Main Street that are going to be adjusted from Main Street, and we can make up those spaces on Princess Street and Center Street. So if Princess Street is made one-way, we'll gain 15 spaces, and then Center Street will be 12 spaces. So there's an additional 27 spaces just on those two roadways alone. There's also municipal spaces that are on both of the roadways right near Crescent Street, and the town is considering changing those from municipal only to public spaces. One other option, if more parking is needed, is to take a look at West Water Street to see if that, making that one-way could increase the number of parking spaces in this area. The one thing that the town is in the process of doing and has had initial discussions is this parking lot here. This is the Water Street parking lot, and this is the parking lot right at Center Street. And, you know, if we change that and reconfigure that parking lot, you could actually gain a number of parking spaces, and that would be a private partnership, a public partnership with the town. So, just in summary, as Jeffrey had mentioned, there's a number of spaces that we're taking a look at increasing. On Lake Ave, there's 16. Common at the rockery, there's 11. Main Street will be a reduction of 21 spaces that will be gained on Princess Street and Center Street. And then there'll be surplus spaces there, and also nine spaces if the municipal spaces are shifted off of both of these two roadways. So there's an additional 42 spaces that this concept adds into the area. One of the things that we heard when we did present this at the focus groups and at the businesses was there was a concern about having merchant parking. There's a few parking spaces right now on Common Street for the merchants, and one of the things that the merchants thought would be a good idea was to have spaces dedicated for them along the Main Street corridor. So, there are, the private-public partnership on Center Street would be one location where merchant parking or longer-term parking could occur, and also specific locations along the corridor. So that's to be determined, but yes, that is a consideration that the town recognizes is a concern for the businesses along the way. And also, as I had mentioned, the municipal spaces would either be at the Housing Authority parking lot or across Centers, or, excuse me, Crescent Street on the opposite side of Center Street. So, closer parking to where the businesses are for long-term parking for the people who work on Main Street. One of the things that we thought were really important, because a lot of people understand that there's parking on Main Street, but they really don't know where there is parking other than Main Street. So, it's really important to have wayfinding and directional signage. So there would be a number of different wayfinding areas and parking signs to show people where the public parking is off of Main Street. Long-term parking locations, so that if you have to visit Main Street on a longer period than two hours, there would be designated parking along the way for that. And all of the spaces within the area will be designated with pavement markings. And what I mean is the specific parking space will be designated with pavement markings, not just a stripe on the roadway and then, you know, a bunch of people park along the shoulder of the roadway itself. Some of the safety concerns with parking, with merchant parking and making sure that people can walk to and from the merchant parking at night would be the addition of call boxes, more police presence in the Main Street area, or in the downtown area in general, and also lighting. There was a concern that it's, it's very dark. It's beautiful, but it's very dark in the downtown area, and there'll be more pedestrian-scale lighting included, which means it's a lower-grade lighting, but it will light up the sidewalk and the crossings a lot more. This is the Water Street parking lot. You can see here it says "future" and "today." So right now, there's 48 spaces here. We could reconfigure that to be 54 spaces with Lincoln Street. One of the, the safety concerns along the corridor that we analyzed is there's a, there's a lot of conflicts. There's a lot of different movements coming out of this intersection with Lincoln Street coming into Main Street. And one of the things that we took a look at was having Lincoln Street for a safety and a parking reason go away from Main Street. And by doing that, you could increase an additional space on Lincoln Street. If the Smith Street was closed off on Water Street, we could just gain about six more spaces in the parking area itself. Now, if you take a look at Water Street, there's angled parking that's along here. That's 13 spaces. That would be reduced to eight spaces of parallel parking. The reason for that is, we heard a lot that people, in the morning especially, when they're going northbound on Main Street, they use the parking stalls that are along Main Street here, and they just go on Water Street. So they actually use the parking area here and then use the parking area here to make that intersection. That's a pretty unsafe condition. So, Center Street right now, if you take a look, there's no pavement markings out there right now, and you can see how the cars are parking just in this image. And what we would be suggesting is, is put pavement markings down here. Make it a more defined parking area. In doing that, you can have over 30 more spaces. And again, this would be a collaboration between the property owners that own the parking lot and the town, which owns a portion of the parking lot also. Construction funding, as Steve had mentioned, the construction funding would be, the town's going to apply for federal money through MassDOT. It's called the Transportation Improvement Program. That Transportation Improvement Program requires that you take a look at mobility for all users of the roadway, not just vehicular. So it would be for pedestrians, cyclists. It's really important. So it would be for pedestrians, cyclists, it's really important, and also vehicular movements and also transit. So that's one thing that we have to take a look at. And also Mass Works. Mass Works is another grant. It's a state grant program that this project is also eligible for. So the town has started talking about this project with the folks that are involved with the Mass Works program at the state level, and will continue to do so. Right now, we've estimated the construction cost to be up to $16.5 million, and like I said, this is eligible for state and federal funding. The next steps, we're here tonight, would be to start talking to the state about the project and what improvements are being moved forward. Take a look at what the streetscape and landscaping elements, as Jeffrey had just mentioned, what the next steps are, what the palette would be, what the sidewalk materials would be, what type of lighting, what the tree spacing would be. One of the things that we've heard is to maintain the trees. You have beautiful trees out there. A lot of them are very, very healthy, and we would maintain those as much as possible. Also, just put together engineering plans. Right now, we just have concept plans that we've presented, and they have to be fully developed into engineering plans. And, you know, one of the things that we want to make sure, because there's been so much public involvement up to this point, is that this is an ongoing and dynamic process. If you have comments or concerns about the design, we'll take a look at it and we'll vet it through and make sure that all the comments are considered as the design is developed. I just put up here the town website, so if you had any interest in seeing any of the public outreach materials up to this point, it's all on the website. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, comments? In the south?
Jack Polano, lot 20, Turnbull Ave. I have Alano's downtown, and I manage the Wakefield building at the other end of the square, so, and I've been doing it for 30 years, so I'm pretty familiar with everything. And I measured the Main Street, and I came up with 38 angled parking spaces that'll be gone off of Main Street, once you net out the parallel parking. Most of you people don't, maybe you do or don't, but in retail, people like to pull in and park in front of the store, do their business and leave. It's nice to have parking down on, by the lake or down by Town Hall. It's good that you put an angle parking down by Town Hall. Really doesn't help the businesses down on Main Street. I'm just saying, you know, I have some of the things I like about the plan, some I don't. I disagree with what you're saying on the Old Town Hall lot. I don't think you're going to get as many spaces there as you say, because there are some spaces there that people park in that aren't lined right now on the street, on Smith Street. So you're kind of overly optimistic. And you've also discussed my property on Center Street. Nobody's discussed it with me. So I'm just saying, I'm going to vote no on the article. Mixed feelings, because there's some things I know we need, and I feel bad, but I feel it's very important to have the parking on the street. Up at Market Street, they designed their parking as angled parking. It's a brand-new project. That's what they find important. Thank you.
Okay. In the south?
Christine DeFleece, 33 Lawrence Street. I was just wondering, why is there going to be so many one-way streets in that small section between Lincoln and Center Street? People are going to be riding around in circles trying to get places. And how is it that you can just close down a street like Smith Street? How are people supposed to get out of that park-a-lot if there's no street there? You're going to keep them in there forever?
Can you answer that? You can answer it, one at a time. There you go.
Okay. The idea for Lincoln Street isn't to keep people in here, but that's actually a good idea. One of the things is to, when we operate, when we're looking at one ways, Lincoln Street right now is one way, correct?
Yeah, going into the square.
Into Main Street, right. So Lincoln Street going into Main Street, what's happening is Lincoln's going into Main Street, Richardson's going into Main Street. We have Water Street that's going in here. Let me go up here. There's a bus stop right here. So there's a lot of conflicting movement. People are, there's a bus stop here, so people are dropping off here. There's a lot of pedestrian movements. It's very narrow in here because of the two bus stops. So one of the ideas was to have Lincoln Street go the other way from a safety perspective. So that's the reason, one of the reasons why Lincoln Street would be going the opposite way. But then the other thing is, if we close off Smith and then bring Lincoln Street up here, they can get on Crescent Street and come down on Water Street. So right now, Smith Street-
It's just a bad flow of traffic, though. And people who are doing business on Lincoln Street and eventually in whoever goes into the charity bank, the Bank of America, whatever it was last, there, a lot of times, you want to get into the square. If you were coming up Water Street, you'd go on Smith, park on Lincoln or in the lot, and then go up the square to go to the bank. To drive all around the world to get to where you're going, it's just going to drive people out of town and out of buying things in the square. And if you have to go to Greenwood, you'd have to go up, getting the traffic, bad traffic at Water Street, to get on Main Street to go to Greenwood. It makes no sense. And so you're just going to close a whole street? And so no one will be able to get into that park-a-lot? Where is the entrance to the park-a-lot going to be?
Okay, can you answer that question briefly?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry. The entrance to the parking lot would be off of Lincoln Street. So people would coming into Lincoln, come in Lincoln Street, go into the parking lot, come out Lincoln Street and go up to Crescent Street. The entrance into Smith Street is really close to the intersection of Water and Main Street, which is another safety issue.
Right, which also alleviates a lot of the traffic on Water Street, because people will go that way and up to where they need to be. So it cuts down the backup on Water Street that goes all the way back to Shaw's sometimes. So you're actually causing more congestion. But I guess also, if this gets passed tonight and you don't get the state money, what happens? All the money we've already spent and this money is just kaput?
Steve, can you answer that? Yeah, but you're going to get up and speak on it, right? You can answer that question? Okay, well then, briefly, answer that question. You'll have your turn to speak.
Ed Dombrowski, 15 Chestnut Street. I've been working with this project for a long while, so I can answer that for you. That was one of the questions we had early on in the process in speaking with VHB. The most important piece to this project is getting to 25%. Once we get to 25% design, and again, this is a project that is, has a design that's going to constantly be revised and reviewed and modified. But once we get to 25%, we can then submit that to the state. Once we submit to the state and we get a commitment from funding from the state, and in speaking with VHB, there's, you don't recall a single instance where the state has not funded a project. The question is only one of timing. I was actually speaking with DPW the other day, and we're very good as the Commonwealth versus some of our neighboring states in that we're good at these projects. And we take federal money and use it well. And sometimes, if there's other states that can't use it as well as we can, we actually, in Massachusetts, can pull from other states and get more federal dollars for our projects within the state. And so we're, it's a very efficient process. It's only a question of timing. It's not a question of whether the funding should be there. Again, there's never been an instance that VHB has seen, and they're premier in doing this, but it's ever been an issue, it's a question of timing. If we're project-ready, if we're shovel-ready, then we're able to move this project along at a faster pace than maybe even some other communities that may not be shovel-ready, even if they have a program.
Right, but there's still no guarantee you're going to get the money. It's the bottom line.
Well, I mean, there's also no guarantee that everyone's going to pay their excise tax or their property taxes, but there's-
That's two different things.
It's not, though, in that the state has a history of always funding these projects. So is there a, you know, 0.001% chance? Certainly. But there's very, there are very few things aside from death and taxes that are certain, and you have a pretty good odds with this project based on the history of the state, and there's no indication that the funding will be an issue.
Okay.
All right, just one more thing. I think we're getting the new parking police, that they showed some of the things that people park in crosswalks, et cetera. Those will all be taken care of, hopefully, if we're paying these people that kind of money, that we're going to get more tickets done. And I think there's a lot of bad things in this plan, and I agree with Mr. Polano about a lot of the stuff, especially taking away the angle parker for parallel. Most people today don't even know how to parallel park, you know? So what are they going to do? But I-
Wait, wait. No, no, Ed, there's not a question.
So anyway, I think we should focus down today-
Please sit down. You're going to get your chance.
-hold off and look into things further.
Okay. Are you up next? Okay. Yeah, in the north. In the north.
Hi, Muriel Campbell, 758 Main Street.
I didn't recognize you sitting down, Muriel.
I just wondered, have, has the committee given any insight or looking into our parking lot there on Lincoln, Smith and Water Street? And consider it all putting in a multi-level garage?
Okay. Who wants it? Where's Falby when we need him?
Did I miss something?
Is this, yeah, yeah, maybe not. Okay, who can answer this? Okay, you can answer this.
I know-
Yes.
Okay. All right. I know the multi-level garage over by the, by the bank. That's gone. That's a puff of smoke. But I was just talking about that one there.
Probably in jest of the Smith Street garage area, it's probably, when you had ramps and everything, it just wouldn't be, it'd be too small to accommodate all that.
Even if we take over Smith Street?
Yes, we'd need to go a little further.
Okay.
Okay. In the south?
Asked, answered.
Yeah, thank you. In the south?
Rata Froalestein, 9 Rochelle Drive. I have been a resident in Wakefield for the last 19 years, and of that, 15 years, I own a business downtown Wakefield. So it's a lot of years owning a business downtown. First of all, I want to thank you all for really being transparent and presenting this project and having public input, and that was really important to me personally and a lot of people that I know. I support this project for a simple reason. We cannot pass $15 million improvements for the downtown area and surrounding streets for so much of improvement for downtown and area for the safety that I know. I witnessed myself five pedestrian being hit over the last 15 years that I was downtown on our streets, and a sixth person that I know of, one of my customers who was hit on that street. I was personally close to hitting people driving through our downtown in a wide sidewalk. The fact that you're going to improve walkability and pedestrian and entire area is really important. As far as the concern of those angle parking and parallel parking, I own a business in another town, not to mention the name. Entire street is parallel parking, very limited, and there's no problem of people knowing with the wayfinding where the parking street, side streets and behind the building and so on. So I'm very confident that the fact that you're going to increase some of the parking street on Princeton and other, of the street, that will, customers will find that. Also important is, we all improve our homes for increase our value. We're improving our town to increase the value of our town and welcoming. We improve our homes and our entries of our houses, and when we have a party, we put the beautiful flower plants and so on for that welcoming effect. It's important to have that welcoming effect to downtown, because people would want to come and linger around, spend more time up in downtown walking. I think this is an incredible way of making our town really more modern and updated. Why would anybody change their kitchens? They're all functioning fine. We all are updating our kitchen and putting new counters on the granite, so why not improve our downtown? I think this is great, and I know there's more room to improve, more room that this project is going to be more public input, which is going to help us to create that better design and maybe even motivate our town to actually build that garage. I would hate to spend years wishing that we actually passed this project just the way we are all, and lots of people are regretting that the garage was not built. So I think it's important to improve this project for multiple reasons. So thank you.
Thank you. In the north?
I'm Joy Goslin. I live on 23 West Water Street. In the general scheme of things, I am very much in support of doing some renovations downtown. It's in the details that I hesitate. I live on West Water Street. I see what goes on there every day. I see the traffic. Making it one way is a crazy idea. Putting more parking on it is even worse. With the new huge buildings, with all the residential parking that doesn't exist in those places, parking's already a problem. And it's been built for, what, a year? I think that we as residents need to continue to have input with the details. As a macro project, great. How can we continue to have input with these details that are going to affect us daily? Never mind the downtown that people just go to from time to time. Those of us who live close to downtown experience it more so. How can we continue?
Do you intend to have further meetings? Okay. They're going to continue on with the same process, I would imagine. Yeah.
Then I'd like to know exactly what we are voting for.
Excuse me, I got to get, Ed, you get to present. You can't comment on everybody's question. They don't have a question. No, no, you're going to get, you're going to be up next. Don't worry. You'll be up next. Why don't you wait until everybody else gets up? It's not, everybody doesn't keep popping up. Ask Chief Smith, he knows that. Took me about four years. So you're going to continue on with the, with further meetings, right? Okay.
So when we vote on this next proposal, I'd like to know more specifically what we are voting on. What are we voting in support of? Because we can vote in support of something, and then the details can get away from us, and I need to know which way I would go with it.
Steve, the vote is to authorize more funding to continue on the project to the next stage. Is that it? And during that next stage, there'll be more input from the citizens, okay? So that's, yeah, nothing set here except additional funding to go to like the second phase of this, okay?
Which is not the digging of the shovels and the-
Oh, no, 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 no.
Thank you.
Continue on. Okay, thanks. In the south?
Hi, Peter Trinelli, 18 Licker Lane. As she just mentioned, the overall plan, we need to revitalize downtown Wakefield. All in favor of that? But again, it is the details. So when I, did you perform a study of track, of flow from vehicles, people and bikes, and what percentage you expect to go, the traffic flow into the downtown area?
Can you answer that?
A full traffic analysis of all of the traffic in the downtown area, including the side streets between North Ave and Main Street, and then Main Street from the junction up to the lake. So yes, we did.
And what percentage from people that are commuting in via vehicle, on bike or walking? Do you see?
The improvements are not just for the current volumes of pedestrians, cyclists and vehicles and bus and everything. It's actually projected also. So I don't have the actual numbers in front of me for the number of vehicles that are going through the area, but everything that we've done is to address the current safety conditions out there and also project, it's a 10-year projection of traffic volume that's going through it to make sure that it's addressed.
Are you changing the flow of traffic from some main intersections? I see it as a problem of getting too downtown. So I don't see, you know, one of my concerns is the bike path. I'm all in favor of the set bike path. But having two lanes of bike traffic in the area, I don't see the value in that. So those type of details concern me. I want to be able to commute- I want to be able to commute downtown, bring my car down there, be able to park, and I can't even get through the town right now. So you stay away from it. I'm really concerned about people staying away from the downtown area. So I really don't see how the overall traffic flow was addressed. Can you comment? Did you do any other studies around the traffic flow?
Yes, now you, there's a question. Now you can answer it.
Okay. When we take a look at the cross-section of the roadway, we look at the roadway capacity in terms of how many lanes of traffic to accommodate the traffic volume that's occurring right now. I'm just doing basic traffic one-on-one. So we took a look at what the number of, of travel lanes that are needed on the roadway itself. One of the concerns that we kept hearing at all the meetings that we had was that the crosswalks that are across Main Street are extremely wide. You know, the, the crosswalks, it takes a long time to get from one side of Main Street to the other. And what we took a look at was you have a lot of pavement area out on Main Street. It's a very wide roadway. And one of the reasons why it's that wide is because when you have angled parking, what you need, when people are backing out of the angled parking, they need their own lane to back out into along with the travel lane. So you have one lane of travel on each side of the roadway, which you'll continue to have. But what we did was in the areas that is just too narrow to safely have your own separate lane, we got rid of the additional pavement area. In terms of all of the traffic circulation at the intersections, one of the points that I wanted, that Jeffrey wanted to point out was all of the traffic signals on Washington Street will be connected. They're called adaptive signals. Uh, Washington, I'm just keeping saying Washington Street, I'm sorry. Water Street, they're called adaptive signals. So they're actually going to look at the traffic volume that's on Water Street and work to address the queuing and the stacking back on traffic on Water Street, getting onto Main Street. So that's one of the traffic conditions that we're taking a look at.
That's good. That's a problem.
And also, at the intersection of Main Street with Salem Street, we're looking at traffic efficiencies there. So what we're doing is we're taking a look at the safety of the roadway, making sure that there's enough room for the different modes of transportation, but also address the traffic volume that's out there right now and also in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, in the south.
Sarah Warwick, 89 Cedar Street, Wakefield. I too am concerned about the traffic flow and whether you've looked at it, like gone through Wakefield at rush hour, when it's especially bad trying to get from one place to the other. Also, how the traffic flow, if, I can't imagine Water Street being a one-way because it is a direct, like from the west side to go to the high school. That's how you get there. You've also got the trains, which backup traffic. So I guess I'm just encouraging, if it hasn't already been done, to look at the traffic at different times of day and how, how, what you're proposing would impact that. My other question is, in terms of two-hour parking, how widespread that would be? Because you've got a lot of commuters who take the train, who are definitely parked, you know, on certain streets for all day. And how that impacts that.
I can answer the first one.
Can somebody turn this back on? Thank you. Okay, you can answer the first question.
When we take a look at traffic and how it's, it's operating through it, what we do is we do, we take a look at the peak hours of the day when most of the traffic volume is out there. So yes, when we collect data, we collect it at the peak hours. And also, we collect it over a forty-eight hour period. So we put in, you see those rubber tubes that go across the roadway? We put in those tubes to take a look at it, or cameras now, I guess they use better technology than when I started, to take a look at the number of traffic vehicles that are using the roadway. And also what we do is we take a look at what's called turning movement. So at each of the intersections along Main Street, we took a look at how many cars were going in and out of the intersections through peak periods. So in the morning when people are going to work and then in the afternoon, the people coming back from work. So yes.
Your second?
One other. So the Water Street being a one-way, West Water, it was actually West Water that we took a look at to see whether or not, what would happen if it was turned one-way. We're, we are not recommending at this point that West Water Street become one-way. It's still gonna operate as two-way. In terms of the two-hour parking restriction?
Mr. Dombrowski, can you answer that briefly? Okay.
So part of this, this downtown revitalization is to try to look at it from like multiple angles. And one of them was the parking piece. And we're very cognizant of, of the number of spaces, but it's also how those spaces are used. Because we could have one, one hundred more spaces, but if they're being used the same way that they currently are being used today, it's not really a value add to us. So we, we looked at them and said, all right, what can we do differently? As Trish pointed out, about thirty-five percent of them are occupied for more than four hours. These are one-hour spots occupied for more than four hours by and large. So we don't have the turnover. So what part of the, the purpose and goal of this project is to look at parking and look at it differently. We have a lot of commuters that are parking all day. So we have a spot in front of Alana, for example, but there's a vehicle that's parked there for ten hours? It's as good as not having a spot there. So we're looking at how we can do it differently. Parking enforcement will allow for that turnover now, so we have a, we're talking about a capacity issue. And we create greater capacity by having these spots that have the turnover within them. We've all, also, as, as the council talked about, certain spots strategically designated as fifteen-minute spots. If you have to run into Smith Drugs to pick up a prescription, if you have to grab, you know, your Thai food from Charm, you can do those things, run in, run out. So we're very cognizant of that. And also, part of it too is migrating some of the, the employee, the merchant parking to more appropriate areas. We understand that the employees need spots, but we also understand that it hurts the business if employees are parking in front of that business. So we're trying to designate areas that are outside of, I'll call it, the customer zone, where merchants can safely have their employees park their vehicles so that they have space. But in the same respect, we're keeping the, the turnover that's necessary for the merchants to be able to thrive. This is very business-centric. We focused a lot on how we can help our downtown businesses as a community, and that's really how we ended up with that. So I think it's important to not think about parking as it currently exists, but parking as it would be under this enforcement. And again, it's pretty compelling, we're looking about, about thirty-five percent of the spots that are occupied for more than four hours now. There's no number of spots that remedies that problem, but parking enforcement does. We looked at about sixteen other communities that have parking enforcement doing it successfully. We expect that come July one with a good awareness campaign, we'll be able to shift some of the, the thinking. And this is a dynamic plan. We will have merchant, signed merchant spots. If we find we need more, then we can put those up in appropriate zones. We've reached out to the merchants. We had a meeting, Mr. Mayo had it just last week, speaking with merchants and, and asked them, where do you think is appropriate for your employees to be parking? So it's, it's safe and also appropriate. We can sign that. If certain spots aren't working, then we can be nimble and we'll move those spots. So it's, we've thought about this. You know, this, this has not haphazardly, you know, come to be in, so this is a part of, it's, it's, it's an important piece of the puzzle.
Thank you.
Are you planning on keeping the spots free?
Pardon me?
Are you planning on keeping the spots free, i.e. you wouldn't start charging people in town?
Absolutely. And also with spots, which I also pointed, there's an earlier question about parking on West Water, for example. We, we can have resident permit stickers in certain zones. So if we find as the town council that there are certain areas where a resident parking sticker is appropriate, then we could have those. And they could override, say, two-hour parking in certain instances. It's all things that we can do, you know, as we go through this, this process. Again, we're not even at twenty-five percent yet. We've got a lot more public input that will be going to this project going forward.
Thank you very much.
All right. Hello, Mike Vesta from 16 Spalding Street. I'm a Wakefield resident. I've been here for about eleven years. I grew up in Melrose. You may recognize the name because my father was a state rep in the area for about a decade. I love the community. I'm starting a business here, in fact, on Princess Street, one of the areas that we're talking about. And I just wanted to voice my support. I have two children in the school systems. I think the additional walkability, closing the sidewalks up to make it easier to cross, is gonna be a huge benefit for the town. And as I think about, you know, the growth and the opportunity to really revitalize downtown, already in the last decade, I feel like we've seen the transformation of the downtown becoming more, you know, vibrant. But we still, you know, have a lot of work to do. There's still empty storefronts. And I don't think it's the parking that's the issue. Again, I grew up in Melrose. We had parallel parking on the street. It wasn't a problem. I think as long as we continue to have these constructive feedback sessions with the town, you know, it's gonna result in a great plan that is gonna work well for everybody and ultimately net us a much, you know, better, more vibrant community that will raise property values, bring more people into the downtown, and enhance business because you're getting a lot more traffic. You're gonna have more foot traffic, you're gonna have more bike traffic. It's gonna be a more welcoming community. And so I think we need to think about, you know, the progress that we're making here. And I urge everyone to vote for continuing this plan because if we don't and we stop and we think, oh, well, some things aren't perfect, or I'm not really happy with this particular change and how it affects me, we lose the opportunity to complete this project in a reasonable timeframe. And already, it sounds like it's gonna be a number of years before we even break ground. I was originally on Vernon Street when I moved into Wakefield eleven years ago, and I was told by the realtor, like, oh, there's this rail-to-trail program that's coming in. It's gonna be great. It's gonna connect Wakefield and Lynnfield. And, you know, we're still not quite there yet. I'm pleased to know that it's making progress. But I'm also a little, you know, scared and nervous to hear that it barely passed in Lynnfield with fifty-three percent, which seems crazy because it's a free, awesome project that the state's paying for, and yet town residents resisted that change. So I just urge us all to kind of, you know, embrace the progress and let's continue to make the town great. So please vote for this. Because again, it's not the end of the road, it's just the beginning of an open conversation. And I think it's an important conversation for us to have, for ourselves and especially for our children. So thank you and please vote for it.
Okay, if you're not standing in line to speak at the speaker, please have a seat. Folks in the wings, seat. Thank you. Bye.
Hi, Deb Butler, 220 Main Street. He's impossible to follow.
Hold on a minute. Get my people to sit down there. Okay.
I'm sorry. I can sing some Hold music while we wait.
Pardon me?
I was gonna sing some Hold music while we wait.
Okay, go ahead.
Deb Butler, 220 Main Street. Again, impossible to follow the eloquent gentleman before me. I just think it goes without saying, but I'm gonna say it. We're talking about four hundred thousand dollars. We're not voting on this plan. We're not voting on the concept. We're voting on four hundred thousand dollars, which is a minuscule amount of money. We spent two hundred thousand dollars, give or take, on, I believe, a net for a baseball field so the balls don't hit the people that don't play tennis. That's half of what we're asking. Overall, and I, and I'm not great with all the numbers, and I don't want to bring up the Public Safety Building because I know it's, it's our topic, but it was about eight or nine million dollars and we were talking about that for one building. For four hundred thousand dollars, we could potentially get sixteen million dollars, and it's gonna benefit the whole town. I mean, we're not gonna get the sixteen million, but like, we were about to pay nine for one building, and now we're probably gonna pay nine to fix the whole downtown. So anyway, for four hundred thousand dollars tonight, that's all we're looking for. Not we, that's all. We're voting on the idea to investigate this further. We're not voting on these streets. There's plenty more meetings for that. So, great job, guys.
Thank you. In the west. Oh, south, you're up next.
Hi, Elena Prairie Casellas. I live at 17 Pine Street. I was coming up for two reasons. One, I just want to express my overwhelming support for this project. I've been in Wakefield for fifteen years now. I work as the city engineer for the City of Melrose, and so I do this type of work day in, day out. And I see a lot of really exciting elements of this project that I think are gonna make Wakefield more vibrant and really revitalize our business district. And so that was one. The other, Councilor Dombrowski pretty much said everything that I was gonna come up and say, but since I was already in line, I stayed. But I think the issue with parking, just, just anecdotally, in my years in Wakefield, it's more an issue of rebalancing than it is a lack of space. We have so many people who are parked all day, whether it's commuters parking in spaces that are right in front of businesses, or residents, or merchants. I think there's a real potential to just rebalance where people are parking. And I think the wayfinding signage would really help if there's something that says long-term parking down this street and short-term parking over here. And I think a lot of the problems that the merchants are concerned about can be solved. Melrose similarly did a merchant parking program that has worked out very well. It's freed up the spaces in front of businesses, and it allows for those people who want to just pop in, buy something quickly, and move on. I know when I've come downtown, if I'm going to say the bread shop just to grab something, if I can't find a space within a few blocks, there have been times when I've had to just go elsewhere, go back home. And I think this can really solve that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tarble.
Chip Tarble, 23 Morrison Road. Mr. Moderator, I know you usually keep things pretty well on the rails, but it seems like we got into a heavy discussion about the actual design and whether we like parallel parking. I believe we're talking about funding and funding moving forward.
But what are we, but what are we funding, Chipper?
There's been ample, ample, ample public discussion, and I'm sure there will be more discussion about the actual design. And certainly, if we fund it, there can be lots more discussion. So it'd be my belief that we should fund this, keep the discussion going, but let's have the discussion tonight be about funding, not about the design. We got lots of other things to do.
No, hold on, hold on, hold on. I mean, really. It's not a pep rally. You're a legislative body. Have some res... Yeah. You are, you are, you are gonna pay for that, Chipper. Trust me. Mr. McLaughlin.
Boy, Chip did an introduction for me because that was exactly what I was gonna ask. Last November, when we were in here, when this, when this project was originally presented to us, if I recall, basically, we were asked to fund a total of a million dollars for the design work, approximately. And, and at that time, the amount of work that was to be done, at least the estimate back about six months ago, was ten million dollars. Is that correct?
Can you answer that?
Yes, it was approximate.
So I just heard fifteen to sixteen million tonight. Is that, that's fair statement, right? So my question is, on the, on the TIP program, is that above or is that around the average grant that would be applied for, you know, for this project? You know, if, overall, for all the various cities and towns that are applying into the trip, are we in the ballpark for fifteen, sixteen million? Are we, we over it or under it?
Can you answer?
Or about average.
About average.
It depends on the project itself and the type of project. And it's not, you're not, you're applying, you're, the, the program is you meet with Mass DOT, you fill out the applications. You don't get a grant, you get approval for the use of federal dollars through the Federal Surface Transportation Act. So that's what you're getting approved for.
Okay. Now, the other thing, oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
The other question that I had is, the question that I had back in November was, there's a five-year window that you can apply for.
Right.
And if that, if your application is denied, just like we were denied the high school occasionally, then you can apply for the next five-year round. Is that, is that correct?
That's not quite right. Once you, you apply, you submit the project on a quarterly basis in a year.
Right.
And you get approval, and then the monies get appropriated in five-year intervals. So it's not that you get rejected over five years. You get approval of the project and it can be put on the TIP. The TIP is a, a project list for a five-year period. So you can be put in that five-year. Typically, the, that, that five-year period has projects already in it, so you'd go on to the next five years. It's not like you get rejected and you'd have to wait for the next five years to get included.
I understand that, but, but they, they forward you into that second, you know, and I understand that, but they forward you into that second, you know, and basically into the next five-year round.
Sometimes, sometimes projects aren't ready for construction, so you can go ahead of other projects. And if it's a really important project for the community, and there's a lot of support and there's a lot of input to the state, then the project can go before five years. But it's a typical five-year interval.
I guess what I'm getting at is, is that for some reason or other, if there was a lot of, a lot of communities that are applying for the TIP program, you know, for renovations for their downtowns, and there's more applications and there is more funding, then, you know, then we're pushed into that next round of funding, which, which is every five years, I understand.
Projects get funded annually. It's, it's an annual basis. So it's just so happens that if you look up State Transportation Improvement Program, they list projects out for every five years. And then the projects that have already gotten approved, and they're not on that list, are on the next list. It's not like they're on the list, but you, there, there's money that is available on the next list for them.
Okay, all right. I guess, not to get into details or anything, but does anybody know whether the Bank of America Building is for sale?
Can, wait, McGrath's not here. Anybody know? Do you know, Steve?
They are currently approaching us about doing some work on the building, the ATM. So when they come in, we'll ask that question.
Because it seems every, all the developers are having a good time in Wakefield buying buildings. So, you know, and I was thinking maybe that we look at that, buying that, buying that building ourselves, and, and then extending that part. I, I put a little sticky note on one of those forums that we had, and, you know, and extending the municipal parking lot into that site. The building, the, you know, the Bank of America Building is, that's not very, that's not a historical building. Of course, the one that was there, the middle of Piano Factory was, but they tore that down to build that. So I, historically, I wouldn't have a problem knocking that thing down, but once in a while, you have a one-time opportunity, like Lonnie Island was a one-time opportunity. Every once in a while, the town has to look at something like this and say, this would be a good opportunity to really expand that municipal parking lot up there. You wouldn't need a parking garage, but it would, it would be a big parking lot. You know, so I'm just throwing it out there. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dombrowski. You're up. You got it.
There's no one else. Ed Dombrowski, 15 Chestnut Street. I think your point shift is an important one about the financial perspective on this, so I wanted to offer some to all of you tonight. We also looked at how we could use this project to leverage our resources, and when you look at Main Street generally, and speaking with DPW, there are a number of projects that are gonna need to be done in the coming years. There's some water main work, some utility work that's gonna have to happen. If we do this project and we go through, we're able to leverage the dollars that we would otherwise, as local taxpayers, municipal taxpayers, be, be needing to put up for things like the, the final paving of that project. So we can coordinate this project with what the DPW work, for example, so that we will have that work done first, and then the paving and all the finish work and the curbing and the, and, and the rest is all part of the project, the construction costs that come through the, the state and federal dollars. And it's not just the, that aspect of it. We also have a lot of tired sidewalks. There's a lot of sidewalk repair. You saw a lot of the, you know, with the, a lot of non-existent handicap ra, ramps to bring us, to make us ADA compliant. Those are all things that we need to do as a town. So the question is, do we do them through our local, you know, tax dollars? Or do we try to leverage opportunities for tax dollars, you know, through, through state and federal programs? So it makes a lot of practical sense, and it makes a lot of financial sense to do that. And if we don't do that, it's going to be costs that we're gonna be paying either way. So this isn't truly an investment, you know, going forward, looking at this. And the return on investment, again, ballpark these projects for the total cost, you're probably looking anywhere from like 10 to 12 percent design of the total project cost. You know, that means anywhere from 88 to 90 percent of the total project costs would be handled by, by the state and the federal dollars. That's a huge return on investment. And, you know, we kinda did some kind of back-of-the-envelope math just the other day and looked at this, and we said, all right, what if we took this entire project area? So if we looked at what you saw tonight, all those streets, and what if we just repaved those streets? Because let's face it, none of those streets are in great condition right now. So if we did that, that would cost the town approximately $2.5 million. That's a $2.5 million outlay. So with this project, by relying upon the state and federal dollars to repave those streets we're talking about, that would potentially free up $2.5 million to direct towards other streets. Your street, other areas that we're not including. So it helps us to advance along our paving project, which I know is, is a pretty significant priority for all of us. So it's a good way to, to leverage the resources that we have available to us. So to leave this kind of money out there and let other communities around us do it, it just doesn't make any practical sense. You know, so if we're just looking just purely the numbers of it, it gives us a real opportunity here to realize an improved downtown and also free up resources in the future for us to better direct towards our other roads that, that require, you know, that, that sort of attention. So I just want to leave you with that because I think it's an important element to this because ultimately, you're right, it does come down to the numbers, and I think the numbers are pretty compelling relative to this project. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being no discussion before you, the motion is that the town appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $390,000 to carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Nice job, folks. Article six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from the tax levy or transfer from available, transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to provide fencing, backstop, dugout, site improvements to Blatts Field, or see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
Okay, I do need my technical people down here to change the PowerPoint, but the motion is that the town appropriate from tax levy the sum of $200,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Second? Mr. Mayo.
Yes, this article is for Blatts Field, and I want to turn this over to Bob Burnett and Dave Story, who are very rabid softball parents, and that, yes, they are.
Right there.
He is, and I remember you from when I was speaking in this building before, I think. So, so in, in any event, we're gonna turn it over to them for this very worthwhile project. They've done a lot of work into it. Thank you.
All right, for everybody who's not familiar with what we're proposing here, there's an existing field, Blatts Field, up behind Woodville School, that would make a good field for the high school softball team. And I just have to figure out which of these arrows to hit. Oh, look at that. This is an aerial view of the, the high school campus. You can see, this is the baseball field over here, got the tennis courts, the football stadium up here, the track and field with a nice turf field. And over here is Blatts Field. Blatts isn't, hasn't, I don't know how to put this, but it's, it's sort of neglected, maybe? I don't know. The right, I don't want to step on any toes here or anything, but it just, it could use some love. Okay, this is the aerial view of existing Blatts, and I've got the, there's an existing fence along here. And so the, we'd basically be taking the diamond and shifting it up this way about, I think it was about 30 feet this way and then about 10 feet. Here's the diagram. This is the existing diamond I was talking about, and this is where it would shift up new. Would have, would keep the existing fence along there with the wooded area, be a new outfield fence, new fencing around the dugouts, new backstop dugouts, and bullpens at the end of each, each dugout. This is the Pine Banks Field where Melrose plays. We use this as a model of what we were trying to achieve. Uh-oh. Oh, you gotta take my weapon. Again, this is the Pine Banks right field. The entire field is, is fenced in with a warning track. We weren't proposing to fence in our entire field. We don't need to where Blatts is, but it's a very similar application. This is their, their dugout area and backstop. They have a, it's, it's a good, good dimension inside for team, you know, so that people have room to circulate, but it could be a little bit better. We would do it with a, with a roof on the top, keep you out of the weather and the, keep the sun off. And we have the, the two-level bench that enables more room for storage and better viewing possibilities for the team. And this is just a bullpen, one of the tip, one of the two bullpens at, at Pine Banks. This is basically the new field superimposed on the existing Blatts layout, again, with the new backstop, new dugouts, and bullpens. The dimensions are per the NFHS, National Standards for High School Sports. Again, with the fence in the outfield and a warning track. We wouldn't have any fencing in, in the outfield otherwise, and it's just the, the bullpen and dugout areas. And this is the artist's rendition of the finished field. You see, we have a little bit more space along the side here that allows more opportunity for folding chairs and spectators. New backstop, covered dugouts and bullpens. And that's what it.
Discussion. FinCom, you go first.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Finance Committee fully supports this project, and I think it's worthwhile. We were impressed with the presentation, with how the design worked, and so a unanimous approval was had by the FinCom.
Any discussion? A motion under Article six. There being no discussion, the motion before you that the town raise and appropriate... Oh, okay. You have to say something. Oh, because you guys are special. No?
Thank you. Julie Smith-Galvin, 28 Grafton Street. I just wanted to point out, I mean, obviously, you just saw from Bob and David that they've done a lot of work, but there are a lot of softball players and parents and the athletic director, and I just, I, I wholeheartedly support this. I think it has been a demonstration of what happens when some citizens have an idea and they go to the athletic director, and they spent time at the school committee, and then they came to us as town council. And this very easily could have been a citizen warrant, but it really became supported by school committee and, and town council as well. And so I just wanted to say thank you to many of the people in this room, many who are under 18 and just sat through five fairly painful articles to be here. So, so thank you, and, and I really hope that everybody does support this effort.
Any further discussion? Motion before you that the town appropriate from the tax levy the sum of $200,000 to carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Really. Okay, let's be quiet on the way out. That's not quiet. Article seven. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, including the excess deficiency account, a sum of money, excuse me, excuse me, we're doing business here, congratulate yourselves in the parking lot. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, including the excess and deficiency account, a sum of money to supplement the personnel service, personnel services account of the town council's office in order to align the current payroll system with the requirements of state and federal law for the period of July 1st, 2018 to July 30th, 2019, and see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $300,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
During a recent review of our payroll procedures by our staff, it was noted that contrary to Massachusetts law, we were paying our employees more than six days after the pay period for which they worked. I have since learned in my breakfast group with other area managers that this is a problem in many municipalities. After consultation with Tom Mullen, it was quickly determined that not being in compliance with the law was not only wrong, but could result in heavy damages. In order to rectify the situation, we aligned the payroll dates, and now all union personnel are compliant with the law. We did need, however, to pay the, to pay amounts via an extra payroll, a smaller one, to catch everyone up, so everyone was compliant. From a budget standpoint, this catch-up payroll required additional funds to cover and be expended in this fiscal year. To cover the costs, we request $300,000 of free cash to be used to cover any shortfall not absorbed by the regular department budgets. We'll monitor each account, and we certainly expect that a portion of this amount will not be used and will be closed out and returned to the general fund at the end of the year, thereby returning it to the free cash account.
Mr. Sherman. FinCom.
Well, the Finance Committee approved this motion, but one of the things that I'd like to add to what Mr. Mayo just pointed out is that this is a one-time adjustment, so it's not gonna be a permanent increase in payroll figure. It's just getting things right-aligned in terms of timing.
Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, the motion before you is that the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $300,000 to carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article eight. Fire supplement. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, including the excess and deficiency account, a sum of money to supplement the fire department budget for the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, and see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $170,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second?
Thank you. The town council and I are committed to ensuring the safety of all our citizens. Part of that commitment is maintaining of three fire pieces available at all times, two at the Central Station and one in Greenwood. In order to safely man, maintain the level of service, we require a minimum of 10 firefighters on the job at all times. When we lose firefighters due to retirement or injury, we usually need to backfill the positions with overtime. That's just a fact of life. This fiscal year, we've had a number of additional firefighters injured or out of work due to other issues. One firefighter was deployed, deployed in the military, and two are no longer with employment of the town. Also, it takes a while to hire and train new firefighters as they have to go to the academy and go through the process. In fact, we just welcomed two new ones this month after a long process of firing in the academy. We also encountered the First Baptist Church fire, which led to about $20,000 in overtime. Therefore, in order to ensure that all shifts were fully covered, we are required to supplement the fire budget by $170,000 to cover the costs of overtime and contractual payments at retirement, if we do have any this year. This is less than fiscal year 2017, which we actually appropriated $200,000, and we actually added in the budget portion tonight, $50,000 to the overtime budget for next fiscal year, in the hope that we can alleviate this problem in the future, and that with the new firefighters should certainly help. I certainly, as I am sure, does the entire community appreciate the sacrifices made by all of our first responders, and this article will ensure that we can maintain the excellent services we all deserve. Thank you.
Discussion, starting with FinCom.
Yeah, the FinCom has been looking at the fire budget for many years and concerned about, every June, I believe, they come in for reserve fund transfer of hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's been reduced last year, is reduced again this year, but it is something that we are concerned about. We did vote unanimously in favor of this article and do support it, and we're going in the right direction, so we're just gonna keep the pressure on.
Any further discussion? Motion under Article eight. There being no further discussion, the motion before you is that the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $170,000 to carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article nine. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from the tax levy or transfer from available funds a sum of money to indemnify certain police officers and firefighters of the town for medical, surgical, and hospitalization expenses as a result of the injuries received by the officers, firefighters, and the performance of their duties, as provided for under Section 100 of Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws. In such an amount and to such an extent as may be recommended by the town council, and see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $30,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Under provisions of Section 100, Chapter 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the town of Wakefield is liable for the direct medical expenses incurred by police officers and firefighters as a result of injuries sustained in the performance of their duties. The amount of payment and the extent of injury sustained are reviewed by the Human Resource Office and appropriate chief, as well as the town administrator. These requests do not necessarily represent final indemnity for a specific period of injury, but rather represent only direct charges incurred. The cost of this article is $30,000, and will allow for the timely payment of the bills from the providers. We cut, we placed, we, we will place $15,000 in each account, so $15,000 in fire, $15,000 in police. Currently, they have about $8,000 in each account. The last time we financed this account was in 2017. The board recommends favorable action on this article, and this rolls over from year to year, so if we don't use it all this year, which I don't think we will, it'll be there for next year and the year beyond.
Mr. Sherman.
This is a recurring article that we have blessed every single year, and we blessed it again this year.
Any further discussion on the motion before you? There being no further discussion. The motion is that the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $30,000 to carry out the purpose of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 10. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sufficient sum of money for the purchase of one 1,250-gallon permanent pumper truck for the use by the fire department, and to determine whether, whether to raise this appropriation by borrowing or otherwise, and see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town of Wakefield appropriate the sum of $700,000 for the purchase of one 1,250-gallon permanent pumper truck for the use of the fire department, and to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow said sum under and pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds for a period not to exceed 10 years. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, unless any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Mayo.
The purpose of this article is to upgrade our fleet at the fire department. The current 1996 pumper, engine four, is 23 years old and shows significant signs of wear and tear. It is currently the backup, but gets plenty of use. This purchase would allow us to place the current 2,000 pumper in Greenwood as our backup and utilize a new pumper. Our capital plan actually calls for replacement of this pumper in fiscal year 2020. It's gratifying to see our community in a position where we can actually meet these needs as planned. Since we bond the cost of the pumper, there'll be no money expended this year, and the cost of the bond, estimated on, on the high side at 90,000 per year, will be handled through the debt service funds with no specific increase for this item due to other debts falling off. If there are any questions on the pumper, Chief Sullivan is here to answer any questions.
FinCom.
FinCom supports this budget article because the, the pumper is old, and it's had the repair costs have been quite high. We've likely looked at it, and we do recommend favorable action on this article.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 10? Oh, okay. Wrong direction. Pardon? Yeah, no, I have two-thirds, yeah. No, I got that. Okay, the motion before you requires a two-thirds vote unless it's unanimous. The motion is that the town of Wakefield appropriate the sum of 700,000 for the purpose of a 1,250-gallon permanent, a gallon permanent pumper truck for the use of the fire department to meet, and said appropriation, the treasurer, that appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the town council, is authorized to borrow said sum under and pursuant to Mass General Laws, 44, Section 7 of the General Laws, or any enabling authority, and issue bonds for a period not to exceed 10 years. Any premium received upon the sale of the bonds or notes approved by this vote, less than the premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may apply to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed and paid for by such costs as by a like amount. All in favor? All opposed? Is anyone opposed, and I can't see you? Motion carries unanimously. Article 11. Huh? Yeah. Yeah, okay. So a motion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening. We're next up, so Joey, you get to be nervous for another four days about your debut. I call him Joey because I spent three years with Little League with him, so I'm gonna, which makes me feel old. Okay, here's what, I just want to point out before everybody splits, we are going to take, next, next time, we're gonna take two motions out of order, and for this reason, Mr. Mullen, although I L does a fabulous job here and went over the whole thing with me, Mr. Mullen wants to be here in particular for those motions, so just as a, sort of a notice to the crowd, which two are they, Steve, again? 22. 26. So he's, he's available next Thursday, so just so you know, we're gonna take 22 and 26, well, we'll, we'll have a motion to take them out of order, okay? That's still to be determined, but just so you know. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn till Thursday at 7 o'clock? Yeah, he just made it. Yeah. And, and it was seconded. So any, you've got a lot of bosses tonight, huh? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much.